We would like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mrs. Smith.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to its republic, which stands order one nation under God, indivisible, free and just for all.
Mrs. Richardson, can we get the roll call please?
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Colonel Alvarado?
Here.
Mr. Sampson?
Here.
Mrs. Matheson is expected. Mr. Dorn?
Here.
Mrs. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Marotti?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
And Mrs. Luke?
Here.
And the board has a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. We will start the evening by having staff introductions, goals and objectives. Create an environment that supports the strengths and needs of staffed so they can create a safe climate where students thrive. Building administrators new to the district or new to their position will be introduced. Mrs. Moline.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite Assistant Superintendent Kate LaPlante to come up and introduce our elementary school principals new to the district or new to their positions.
Thank you. And I would like to invite our new assistant principals, or principals, elementary principals and interim principals to come join me up here for the introductions. So that would be Petra Timmons, Allison Wilde, and Nick Hoy. Come up here and take the stage.
Thank you. So it is my honor and pleasure to introduce three wonderful additions to our leadership staff in the district. Petra Timmons is interim principal at Anne Wean Elementary School this year. Petra has worked in the Fairbanks North Star District since 2000. In that time, she has been a volunteer, a reading tutor, substitute teacher, and an EL instructor, all while working towards her teaching certification. In that time, she has been a volunteer, a reading tutor, substitute teacher, and an EL instructor, all while working towards her teaching certification. In 2006, Petra started teaching at North Pole High School, later shifting over to an administration in Lathrop as an assistant principal. Petra was recognized and honored as our Assistant Principal of the Year in 2019 at Ryan Middle School. And Petra is excited to serve Anne Ween Elementary School as the interim principal, where she has absolutely loved getting to know the students, families, and staff. So welcome, Petra. Allison Wilde is our principal at Two Rivers Elementary School, K-8. Allison Wilde may be the new principal at Two Rivers, but she has been part of the community for over 20 years, raising her kids and participating in the community events. After receiving her Bachelor in Biological Sciences from UAF, Allison continued her studies to earn her teaching certificate and took her first teaching position at Two Rivers, teaching grades four through six. Allison says, "Two Rivers is my home and community. I have raised three children here and do farming in the summer." She loves that she and her kids can bike or ski to school and is excited to serve her community in this new leadership role. Welcome, Allison. Following a career in the Air Force, Nick Hoy turned a career, turned to a career in education and has been working in education for the past 12 years. In that time, he has spent six years as a classroom teacher and also served as a building and district-wide instructional coach and mentor for new teachers. Nick is excited to join Salcha Elementary School as the interim principal this year. Living and raising his kids in the Salcha area, he looks forward to experiencing the variety of hands-on activities that continually take place both within and outside of the school. Welcome, Nick. Do you want them to... I think that's it. Thank you so much.
All right. I'm Luke Minor, and I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Secondary Schools and have the pleasure to introduce our secondary assistant principals and principals. So I'll ask those folks to join me up here. All right, and since it's such a big group, and I don't know that we're in order when I call your name, if you can give a little wave to folks. All right, we'll start with Heather Johnson. She is the official principal at Tannenah Middle School. Heather Johnson served as the interim principal last year and now is the official principal there. She is a veteran educator, starting with the district in 1997. She began her teaching career at Hutchinson High School Career Center and the Options Teen Parading Program. She then moved on to teach at Lathrop High School, Tannenah Middle School, and then back to Hutch when it reopened as a standalone high school in the 2003-2004 school year. She has taught a variety of subjects such as health, psychology, physical education, personal relationships, and clinical nutrition during her 16 years of teaching. In 2015, she became an assistant principal at the West Valley High School and spent six years with the Wolfpack before moving to Tannenah in 2021. In 2020, she was named the Alaska AP of the Year. In the spring of 2022, she interviewed and received the job of principal. Heather is excited to have a new grade level in her Tannenah and looks forward to the challenge of heading up the largest middle school in the district. Michelle Splain, principal at North Pole High School. Michelle has lived in the Fairbanks area for over 20 years and feels very rooted in our community. She has been with the school district since 2003. Michelle is looking forward to applying the skills she has learned throughout her years of teaching in the classroom and in her time as assistant principal to support North Pole High School's vision of empowering students become lifelong learners. She is excited to build relationships with staff, students, families, and community members at North Pole High and feels honored to serve as the principal, and we're very lucky to have Michelle Splain as the principal there. Graham Story, who's not up here, but he's serving as the assistant principal at Randy Smith this year. Graham came up to Alaska in 1997, seeking his next big adventure in education, and fell in love with the interior and his wife. The person who he, Elizabeth, the person who he would become his wonderful wife. Circumstances caused the Stories to move around the state, including stops in Nome, back to Fairbanks, a great string in Juneau, and then a fantastic opportunity to return to the interior. Graham has worked at Lathrop, North Pole High, and is now at Randy Smith Middle School. Sarah Fonger, she's the assistant principal at Ryan Middle. In her first year, she's been in education for seven years as a paraprofessional and an elementary school teacher, most recently at Anderson Elementary. In her free time, she enjoys challenging jigsaw puzzles, reading, and watching documentaries. And she's most looking forward to growing and learning this upcoming year as she takes on the middle school. Mark Obi, he's an assistant principal at North Pole High. Mark is an Army veteran and a former Black Hawk helicopter pilot. If he can do that, I think he can do anything within our school district. This is his 17th year in the district, and he's taught social studies at Hutchinson for the past 16 years and was their activity coordinator for two years and is helping us out with our activities at North Pole High. Mark is a resident of North Pole and is looking forward to serving the community he lives in. North Pole High is very excited to have Mark join its team as an assistant principal. Andy Zink, also assistant principal at North Pole High School. Andy is originally from Southern California, where she taught high school business, computer literacy, consumer math classes, and coached various sports. Andy moved to Alaska 11 years ago to work for the Northwest Arctic Borough School District as a school counselor and most recently was the principal at Davis-Ramoth Memorial School in Sellowick. Brian Powell, familiar name around here. He's an assistant principal at West Valley High School this year. Brian has been with the school district since 2000 in a variety of positions. He taught science and math at Lathrop High School to begin his career, then went out to North Pole Academy from 2002 to 2008, and then was principal at Nord Elementary School from 2009 to 2022. Brian is a great addition to the administrative staff at West Valley High School, and he's excited to be working with high school students again. And then Liesel Whitgriff, assistant principal at West Valley High School. Liesel is beginning her first year as a permanent assistant principal at West Valley High School. She served in interim capacity last year. She has been with the district for 18 years, previously teaching music and positions ranging from elementary through high school across six different schools. She is happy to continue to learn and grow as a proud member of the Wolfpack team. So thanks for our wonderful secondary principals and assistant principals. I'll invite Lori Beam up to introduce our charter principals and head teacher.
Thanks. If I could have Caitlin and Stacy join me, please? It is my pleasure to introduce our new principal and head teacher at Discovery Peak and Boreal Sun. First, we have Stacy Foshee. She's the principal at Boreal Sun Charter School this year. Prior to teaching for our school district, Stacy spent 10 years living and teaching in the bush on the Seward Peninsula in Teller and Koyuk. She's been an educator with us for 15 years, and during that time, she taught at Lad Elementary and Barnet Magnet School. After that, Stacy served as an instructional coach and a district-wide coach. She then went on to become the interim principal at Joy Elementary in the 21-22 school year. Building relationships with others is her superpower. As you see, she has a lot of superpower because she builds those relationships pretty fast. She enjoys meeting new teachers and people and learning about their lives. In her spare time, she loves spending time outdoors in our beautiful state, mountain biking, and hanging out with her three children who have grown into successful products of our community and have gone to our schools. Stacy was thrilled to be chosen by the board at Boreal Sun for their principal job this year, and we are so happy to have her. She is our first principal at Boreal Sun. We had a head teacher before, so welcome, Stacy. Next, we have Caitlin Osborne. Caitlin is our new head teacher at Discovery Peak Charter School. She is a product of Alaska. She was born and raised in Alaska and has lived in North Pole for 11 years. As a child, she attended our Fairbanks School District schools, and now her children attend our schools. She started her teaching career as a special ed teacher in the resource area and has spent five years in that position. She's excited to develop our leaders and teachers and future, future leaders, as she has little ones, in our community. We welcome Caitlin, and congratulations to both of you. Thank you. Next, I'd like to welcome our new director, Nathan Pitt. Nathan is our Director of Virtual Learning and Best Homeschool. Nathan comes to Fairbanks from Denali Borough School District, where he served for seven years as the principal at Tri Valley School in Healy. He has experience as an administrator, a program developer in CTE, and as a technology and distance learning coordinator. Before that, he was a teacher at Bering Strait School District. Nathan has a bachelor's degree in English from UAF, a master's in elementary ed from UAS, and is ed leadership endorsement from UAA. So you can see that he loves learning. It's my pleasure to introduce you to Nathan Pitt. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we welcome you all to your new positions within our school district. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda. Core value: Student-centered, center everything we do on the student and student learning. Consent agenda items marked with an asterisk are considered routine items not requiring public discussion by the school board. Unless removed from the consent agenda, asterisk items will be automatically approved when the agenda is adopted. Questions concerning these items should be directed to the administration before the meeting. If the school, chief school administrator or a member of the public wishes to have an item removed from the consent agenda, the request must be made to a board member any time prior to the start of the meeting. The board member has the discretion to accept or deny the request. Only a board member may remove an item from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it shall be considered separately as the last item of new business. Asterisk items will then be adopted by one single motion. Can I get a motion?
Move to adopt the agenda with consent items.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Can I get a vote?
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Siri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson? Is not here yet. Okay, Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Agenda has been adopted.
Can we please get the presentation on agenda items?
The board has accepted the grant award in the amount of $60,849.70 for the Title X Part C McKinney Vento Homeless Education Grant from the United States Department of Education through the Alaska Department of Education and Early Development per fiscal note 2023-01. The board has approved requests to fundraise travel for North Pole High School's request for its JROTC program to raise approximately $12,000 to send the JROTC cadets, instructors, and chaperones to Honolulu, Hawaii on March 7 through 15, 2023 for the biannual AFJROTC curriculum in action trip at no cost to the district. And if any local, state, or federal travel or health warnings are issued, students will not travel. West Valley High School's request for its West Valley High Model UN program to raise approximately $2,000 to send 35 students and three adults to Boston, Massachusetts on January 24 through the 29, 2023 for the Harvard Model UN Conference. Cost to the district is two substitutes for four days. And if any local, state, or federal travel or health warnings are issued, students will not travel. West Valley High School's request for its JROTC program to raise approximately $6,000 to send JROTC cadets to Anniston, Alabama on February 2 through the 5, 2023 for the air rifle competition. Cost to the district is substitute for two days. If any local, state, or federal travel or health warnings are issued, students will not travel. And West Valley's request for permission for its JROTC program to raise approximately $6,000 to send JROTC candidates to Camp Perry, Ohio on March 22 through 26, 2023 for the air rifle competition. Cost to the district is substitute for three days. And if any local, state, or federal travel or health warnings are issued, students will not travel. The board has approved requests to fundraise for Midnight Sun Elementary School request to fundraise approximately $1,000 per fair by hosting both a fall and spring scholastic book fair on October 27 through November 4, 2022 and February 16 through February 24, 2023 to raise funds to purchase books and supplies for their library and Fund Family Literacy Night and other literacy promotions. Salcha Elementary School request to fundraise approximately $1,000 through local business donations to be used in assisting students and families with lunch money in the event they are overdrawn. Ben Ileson Jr., Senior High School request to fundraise approximately $4,000 by hosting a Donate a Date fundraiser to raise funds to support the school's travel expenses to the JROTC program. The board has accepted donations of $1,000 from the VFW Post 10029 to Ben Ileson Jr., Senior High School to support the school's football team travel expenses. $2,000 from the EOSC Welfare Fund at Ben Ileson Jr., Senior High School to support the school's volleyball team. $3,000 from EOSC Welfare Fund to Ben Ileson Jr., Senior High to support the school's soccer team. $1,500 from Jeans Dealership to Lathrop School to support the school's flag football team. $1,500 from EOSC Welfare Fund to North Pole High School to support the school's swim team, travel, and supply expenses. $2,000 from the North Pole Rotary Club Foundation to North Pole High School to support the freshman ignition program. $3,497.89 from the North Pole Wrestling Club to North Pole High School to reimburse the school's wrestling team travel expenses for the 2021-2022 season. $6,529.95 from the North Pole High School Volleyball Club to North Pole High School to reimburse the school's volleyball team for travel expenses for the 2021-2022 season. $7,263.89 from the Interior Girls Softball Association to North Pole High School to reimburse the school softball travel expenses for the 2021-2022 season. And $2,100 from Gregory and LaDust West Side to West Valley School to support the school's JROTC program goals. The board has approved the Personnel Action Report for the period August 5 through August 25 and the minutes of the August 15, 2022 special meeting as submitted. The board has acknowledged the Personnel Information Report for the period August 5 through August 25, 2022, the board's reading file, and the coming events and meeting announcements.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is public comments on reports and non-agenda items. Public comments on reports and non-agenda items, including public comment input ideas and suggestions, are welcome on salaries, benefits, and any other contractual items regarding the Educational Support Staff Association and the Fairbanks Education Association negotiations. Core value: Engage with students, families, staff, and community to support Core value: Engage with students, families, staff, and community to support student success. Public comments on reports and non-agenda items are limited to two minutes per person for a maximum of one hour. People who have signed up in advance through the school board office to testify in person or by Zoom will be called upon first, and if time remains, anyone else who is in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour time limit has been reached. A person testifying shall state their full name, spelling their last name, and their city of residence for the record. Board members may ask questions for clarification. Although there is time at the end of each meeting for our school board and chief school administrator comments, some concerns may not be able to be addressed immediately as additional information may need to be gathered. We will start our public comments first with Sandy Ryan. If you will come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
I always like testing the mics first. Okay, can you hear me? Everything good?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Sandy Ryan. I'm a 29-year teacher of mathematics and computer science here in Fairbanks, and currently I serve as the FBA president. I reside in Fairbanks, and the spelling of my last name is R-Y-A-N. At what I think was the last school board meeting of the year last year, a discussion was opened about reorganizing current board committees. It is often good to look at the structure, evaluate, and work that's being done.
Oh, sorry.
That was a really fast two minutes.
Yes, and if you want to speak on committees?
It's really not.
Can?
I can, I can do it at a different time, but I don't think it's about committees. I can wait.
If it's not about committees, go ahead and proceed. I just want to make sure that we are.
I played with where to put this, so I can, I can hold it to the first committee meeting, and then I have another one for the second one. What's your pleasure, Madam President?
If we're going to discuss committees in your testimony, I would like for it to fall within
You got it.
So we can ensure that it's
In the same conversation?
In the same conversation.
I have no problem with that. I really, I vacillated back and forth on where it actually belonged, so my bad.
I will, I will put you on the list.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cecile McBride. Gail McBride, I apologize. If you
Wasn't another McBride here, so.
No, I apologize. If you'll just state your first name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you'll have two minutes to testify.
Okay. Gail McBride, M-C-B-R-I-D-E. Residence is Fairbanks, Alaska. I'm here to address the resolution on lesbian, homosexual, bisexual.
We need to, I will need to put you onto the testimony list for that resolution. Because right now is public testimony on non-agenda items or on reports, and because that is something that will be voted on, that needs to happen during the resolution. So we will call on public testimony for that resolution, and I will put you on the list for public testimony at that time.
Okay. I didn't understand that when I read the, read the agenda. Maybe it could be clearer on the, on the agenda.
Thank you. Yes, I will. I will put you on that list. Thank you. Give me one moment to make sure I put it on the right place. Next, we have Catherine Ninmer. If you will come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
My name is Catherine Anne Ninmer, N-I-N-M-E-R. I live in the city of Fairbanks, the borough of North Star, I guess. I said that wrong. The state of Alaska and the United States of America.
Thank you.
What's next? I'm not good with protocol. I haven't been able to read.
That was perfect. You will have two minutes to testify.
What am I testifying on? I forgot. It'll come back to me. It's just I'm out of order.
You wrote "non-agenda items"?
Oh, public schools. I would like to strongly encourage, ladies and gentlemen, that we over-promote the need for public, public schools attendance. I don't feel you can over-promote that. Children, children can't learn unless they are engaged with other children. They can stay home, maybe read a book, maybe play games on their computer. I can't do that. Not interested. Those are skills that are handy and fun, I'm sure, for them. But too many kids are doing this homeschooling thing. I don't think that's healthy. I don't think it's, I don't think it's wise because they can't engage. They can't learn how to communicate. They can't learn how to, they can't learn how to interact, I guess. And I'm very ill-prepared. I'm sorry. I just heard about this today. I've been busy with some appointments. So that's basically, just boils down to it. Promote the public school system. That system simply is just too important to blow off. That's it.
Thank you so, oh, perfect timing. Thank you so much for your testimony.
I can see the clock.
Thank you for your testimony. And I have you signed up for later on in the agenda.
I think a couple more times.
Yes.
Having gotten all my senses back in recent weeks, and I mean physical senses.
We That concludes our, those who have signed up previously for a testimony. Are there any within the room that would like to testify on non-agenda or reports within our agenda? Seeing none, public testimony is closed. Next, we will have the Borough Assembly Report. Core value: Engage with students, families, staff, and community to support student success. Mindy O'Neill, Borough Assembly President Officer, will provide the assembly report. Presiding officer, thank you. I do not currently see her online. If she comes back online, we can go back to the report. So moving forward, we have the President's Report. Goals and objective: Ensure students, staff, families, and the community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. And I will provide the report. One of the biggest items that we have before the board, and the biggest responsibility that board members have, is to hire the next superintendent or chief school administrator. Some of the things that we are currently doing is finding a company who will help us through this process. Just as last year, we sent out for a proposal from four different companies. They came back and gave us those proposals, and we hired a company. This year, we have sent out for, to seven different companies. Currently, five companies got back to us and said that they would like to give a proposal. Hazard Young, Atia and Associates, Greenwood Search, Association of Alaska School Boards, McPherson and Jacobson LLC, Ray and Associates. And so we are waiting for their proposals, which will be due by this Friday on the 9th. And we have scheduled a board review for a work session on the 19th, and that will allow the board to take all of the information from those proposals, just as we had it last year, where we're able to have it in kind of a chart format so that we can weigh each one of those companies and see if they would be the best fit to help us along with the superintendent's search. And then on the 4th of October, at that regular board meeting, we will have a vote on which company the board will move forward with. And if between the 19th and the 4th, an ad hoc committee is needed to really kind of pinpoint one or two of the options that have made proposals for us, we will, we will create that ad hoc committee at the September 19 meeting so that we could have the information in time for the October 4 meeting. And the reason for this is to ensure that everything is in place for when the new board comes on, so that they can just get the ball rolling and ensure that we have there, there is no friction in place for moving forward to hire a new superintendent or chief school administrator. And so this way, the board is set up to hit the ground running and get that search out early, get the word out early so that we can get some of those amazing top candidates that we know are out there to work within our school district. And that concludes some of the information. Mr. Doran?
Just a quick question. So RFPs are due Fridays, so we could get any number of proposals?
Correct. Correct.
So there, if there are other companies out there, they, there are notice, they've got a few days to get that in?
We, yes, we actually were reached out to by other companies, and we asked them to go ahead and submit a proposal. And they will be put in with the rest of the ones that we as well reached out to.
Great. Yeah, and I think it's great that we've got more companies interested than last time, and that's a growing, growing opportunities for us. So thank you.
You're welcome. Any further questions? Perfect. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Chief School Administrator Report. Goal and objective: Ensure students, staff, families, and the community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. Chief School Administrator, Mrs. Mullin, will provide the CSA report. Mrs. Mullin? And before I turn time over, I just want to note, Mrs. Matheson joined our meeting.
Thank you, President Luke. The first topic I'd like to cover in the report is, is enrollment. At the end of last year, we set our projected enrollment at about 12,200 students. We do that so we can staff, get staff in place for the next school year. There are two times a year, other times a year, that we do a head count, as it were. The first time is in the first 10 days of the school, and the purpose of that head count is to make sure that we are staffing to our PTR and classrooms are covered. This year, our 10-day count came in at 12,000, right about 12,700 students, which does represent an increase of about 500 students over our projected number from last year. The second head count that happens will be in October, and that's the head count that sets our state funding. We send those numbers into the state, and they determine our funding through a formula. So the 10-day count and the October count, that, those numbers fluctuate up and down. Sometimes the 10-day count is lesser more than the October count. What we do see is that there's a significant uptick in enrollment from where we were at this point last year and at the end of the school year last year. So the second topic I want to cover is transportation. We're in the process of updating our contract language with Durham for the use, so we can get our van plan in place. And they're working to get drivers, and those drivers will need to go through training and follow the Durham Expected Safety Protocols. Next, I'd like to address our, how our district is approaching our strategic plan and implementing those strategic goals and district objectives identified in the strategic plan. First on the list is student success. And one of, just one of the ways that the district is meeting that objective is through our focus on literacy. Literacy is that gateway skill needed to unlock other learning. So, so are we intentionally turning our focus on supporting teachers in literacy instruction and students moving towards higher levels of, of learning through, through literacy? The second district objective of equity and inclusion. One of the ways that we are addressing this is through a department-specific approach. The, the reason that we're moving this way is because equity and inclusion looks different in different departments. So, so we are making space for those most impacted and with the, the most knowledge to have space to give input and perspective and, and be a part of it in a way that's real for them. For instance, we have embedded family groups and parent engagement groups in our departments. So for instance, the Special Education Department has as a, an engagement community that they regularly interact with. So, so they will interact with them on, on the topics of inclusion and equity. The same is true for the Student Support Services Department. Many of those federally funded programs have parent advisory councils or check-ins with, with an engagement community. So taking that, this topic to those people in, in the world that they live in and giving them, like I said earlier, a space to give that very specific input and perspective from, from their department. So they engage with them on a regular basis and, and having that be a part of our regular conversation. So number three, community engagement, communication and engagement. One of the ways that we're approaching this goal is to continue with our weekly district digest. That's an internal newsletter to our district staff where we recognize staff for accomplishments and provide information about what's happening across the district. We've also been evaluating our communication to families, and so we've done a bit of a refresh on our family district newsletter, hoping that we can present information in a way that's more engaging and effective for families. We have regular meetings scheduled with our Teacher Advisory Council Department and continue to engage with embedded program stakeholders to receive that perspective input that we desire. Number four, district objective, workforce and organizational excellence. One of the ways that, that we're continuing to address this as a district is to, to continue to recruit and attract teachers and, and staff to our district. So we're, we're growing and fostering relationships with UAF and finding multiple pathways toward teacher certification and employment. In addition to that, we already have in place a relationship with Shadrone State College to help those who are working as paraprofessionals to move towards teacher certification and special education. So that concludes my report for this evening.
Questions from the board? Mr. Doran?
Thank you, Mrs. Mullin, and also thank you for your board brief the end of last week, which is really good. Just on enrollment, because people have asked, how have we, are we continuing to sort of pick up students that we may have lost over the pandemic? And if I'm And if I'm correct, we picked up about 1,000 last year, another 500 now this year. So we're getting close to where we had been.
The number of buses in our community will meet any increase in staffing that we have on bus drivers.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions from the board? Seeing none, thank you so much, Mrs. Moline. We have no unfinished business, so we are on to new business. Item number one, Resolution 2023-05 Honoring Indigenous Peoples' Day. Goal and objective: Provide equitable opportunities and an inclusive environment where all students and staff are respected and feel welcome, safe, and supported. Resolution 2023-05 honors Indigenous Peoples' Day by proclaiming the second Monday in October, October 10, 2022, as Indigenous Peoples' Day and encourages staff and students to honor it through interactive research, classroom lesson plans, guest speakers, displays, lectures, practical activities, and cultural celebrations. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approve Resolution 2023-06, recognizing... Oh, I'm on the wrong one. Honoring Indigenous Peoples' Day. So it's Resolution 2023-05.
Second. Thank you. It's been, it's on the floor, and it's been seconded. Ms. Smith, can I have you read that, please?
Whereas indigenous people have occupied the land that now constitutes the Fairbanks North Star Borough, and whereas the Fairbanks North Star Borough is built upon the homelands and villages of the indigenous people of this region, without whom the existence of the borough would not be possible. And whereas students of indigenous people heritage are a significant population of the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District's student body. And whereas exempt and classified staff of indigenous peoples heritage support all students' learning. And whereas educators of indigenous peoples heritage distinguish themselves as educators in the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District classrooms. And whereas building administrators of indigenous peoples heritage have led their schools with vision. And whereas indigenous people have served the school board with distinction. And whereas the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education values the many contributions made to our community through indigenous peoples' knowledge, labor, skills, monetary contributions, and the deep culture contribution that has substantially shaped the character of the city of Fairbanks and the entire Fairbanks North Star Borough. And whereas the Fairbanks North Star Borough's Board of Education opposes systematic racism toward the indigenous people in the United States and exasperates disproportionate educational opportunities. And whereas the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education promotes the closing of any achievement and equity gaps for indigenous people through policies and practices reflecting the experiences of indigenous peoples, ensuring greater access and opportunities honoring our region's indigenous roots, history, and contributions. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by a delegate of the Native Nations of the United Nations Sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas. And whereas in 2011, the affiliated tribes of Northwest Indians represented 49 tribes from Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Northern California, Western Montana, and some Alaska tribes. Passed Resolution Number 11 through -57 to support the change Columbus Day, second Monday of October, to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And whereas in June 2017, the state of Alaska passed legislation establishing officially recognizing the second Monday of October of each year as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Alaska, to be observed by suitable observances, sorry, and exercised by civic groups and the public. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education proclaims the second Monday in October, October 10, 2022, as Indigenous Peoples' Days and encourages staff and students to honor it through research, classroom lessons, plans, guest speakers, displays, lectures, and practical activities and cultural celebrations. Assistance with resources is available through the Alaska Native Education Program.
Thank you. Before we go to administration, we're going to public testimony. First on the list is Julie Smith.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. If you would state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you'll have two minutes to testify.
Hello, my name is Julie Smith, S-M-Y-T-H, and I live in downtown Fairbanks. I would like to encourage each of you to vote for this, as well as to make the change that this does not need to be voted on yearly, as there should be no reason to consider not doing Indigenous Peoples' Day in the future. I have spoken on this before, in previous years, and have listened to some of the harmful reasons why some current board members have spoken against this and voted against it in the past. And yet, I am still here speaking for it and sharing the story of my mother, who died two years ago at the age of 52 and was a boarding school student, who had experienced all sorts of systematic racism as she and her siblings were growing up, and then as she was raising me here in Fairbanks. And it did not end when her life ended either. And it is important for all of the students across Alaska to understand the impacts history has had on current students and their parents, so that way they understand what that trauma looks like when they go out into the world and interact with people in non-school settings.
Julie, thank you. That's time. Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. Next, we have Clark Putt. We don't see Clark online, but if we see Clark pop up, we will go back to him. Next, we have Clint Lehman. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Howdy, my name is Clint Lehman. I am living in Goldstream, but I have six kids who have been attending here in the borough.
Can you, can you just check if your mic is on?
Hi, yep, there we go. Sorry. My name is Clint Lehman. I am from Fairbanks. I currently live in Goldstream. We have six kids who currently go to school here in the district. I have been here for 45 years, all my entire life. I am from the Alatina area for my family, Niktoon and Fleegal. We are indigenous, we are Alaska Native, and Anupiak. And I think that this needs to pass. My grandmother is also someone who is still alive, who came from the boarding school era. And it needs to be recognized that it has existed in our time, and we need to recognize that it should be a day dedicated to the people of Alaska. It's not too big a thing to change. I'm hoping you don't take it as some monumental thing you must do to fight whatever it is you think you need to do, but Indigenous Day is needed. We need more representation for our native people here in Alaska, Fairbanks, all over the state. So I just highly encourage that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Mary Wiley, Willie. Oh, I always say it Wiley. Mary Willie. If you will come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify. No. Now? Thank you. I'm Mary Willie. I'm an enrolled member of the Dot Lake Village Tribe. I am also an employee of Fairbanks Native Association. I'm here representing Fairbanks Native Association. FNA wholeheartedly supports the resolution to honor Indigenous Peoples' Day. Alaska Native students make up approximately 18% of the student population. At FNA, our vision is we are a unified, healthy, empowered native community that embraces all cultures. At FNA, we are rooted in our culture and our traditional values. It is important that the district creates a space for our indigenous students to be proud of who they are and where they come from, but also to create an opportunity for non-indigenous students to gain knowledge and understanding of our beautiful cultures. What our indigenous culture has to offer to all students in this district is storytelling, beating, carving, sharing, surviving off the land and our way of life. How our people have survived and thrived for millennia, we humbly ask that this board support this resolution to honor our culture on this one day a year. Thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we have Catherine Nimmer. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you'll have two minutes.
My name is Catherine Nimmer, N-I-N-M-E-R. I live in the city of Fairbanks, Fairbanks North Star Borough, state of Alaska, the United States of America, and now planet Earth. Sometimes. I wholeheartedly support what the indigenous people have done and supported. I've spent... This summer has been the best summer of my life. And I'm not all that old, but I'm getting there, and I plan to go further. I've seen a lot with my children, with my friends. We've visited as much as we can. I'm sorry, I didn't address here as ladies and gentlemen. I forgot that part. I wish I could have been prepared and written this down. It would have taken so long. But I can't say thank you enough to those people for providing what they have for my enjoyment, my entertainment. I love it. I've been here a long time, but I wasn't born here. I like to think of myself as multicultural, multi-racial, multi-everything, because I am. I want, when we go camp, and we camp when we go out, we don't hunt and fish for food we don't need. And fortunately, we don't have that need. We clean our campsite when we get there, and we use Chena Lakes a lot because it's close to medical. Wasn't quite done. Can I ask a favor? I wanted to say thank you to all of those people to set aside a regular day for a group of people I have difficulty with, only because I appreciate all of it. It's all important. We're all important. I'm of Danish-American heritage, obviously. Mr.?
Miss Nimmer?
Yes?
We're gonna, we're gonna have to...
You're gonna cut me off.
I'm sorry, but we are going to have to do that. We have a lot of people who are going to testify for other agenda items.
But thank you. I don't know how to advise you. I want everyone celebrated.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening.
Thank you for your tolerance.
And we will see you in just a few moments. That is the end of... Those who have signed up for public testimony on this agenda item, are there any in the room that would like to testify on this agenda item? Seeing none, public testimony is closed. Mrs. Moline, is there anything further from the administration?
Nothing further.
Thank you. Is there anything further from the board? Mrs. Matheson, Ms. Marotti, and then Mr. Doran?
So there was something interesting that was said earlier about just making this a regular, every-year thing, so that we don't have to vote on it. Like, we know that we're gonna honor our heritage. We know that we're gonna honor our people. So why is this coming up all the time? And how do we get it so that we don't have to bring this up all the time?
Ms. Smith?
I'm sorry. I know that's out of order of our questions, but I just wanted to directly say something about that, which is that the point of the resolutions is to bring it up every year, because what we're trying to say, we're saying in a public way. So if you just throw it on a book somewhere, then it just lives on the book. And there's no public recognition of the thing we're trying to recognize. I just, I had wanted to ask Ms. Smith that when she was testifying, but I mean, it was just immediately relevant to that question. So I think it's important that if we're resolving something, that we do resolve it every year for the public recognition, the same reason why we publicly recognize our acceptance of donations and stuff like that, for the public statement.
If the board would like, we can do some research into what that would look like in detail, and we can send an email. You're welcome. Ms. Marotti?
Thank you. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank the boards of the past for passing this resolution, as it has provided great celebration and acknowledgement of the indigenous people that originally founded this great community. I fully support the resolution passing again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doran.
I'm fully supportive of this, and I appreciate Mrs. Smith's comments. I think that it is really important that... I think that it is really important that we keep these issues in mind. As I was thinking here, it also is one step that when we make our land acknowledgement, that this and our, what we talk about in our strategic plan, that this is also putting something in action, and so their reminder, and I've found it very, very helpful within the schools as a principal, and working with teachers and students, opportunities to do things. I'm very supportive of this recognition.
Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. I'm also supportive of the recognition. However, I'd like to move to strike the ninth whereas, so that I can happily vote for this resolution.
Can you read that?
Whereas the Fairbanks North Starborough Board of Education opposes the systematic racism toward Indigenous people in the United States, which exacerbates disproportionate educational opportunities, and.
Second.
Would you like to speak? It's been moved and seconded. Mrs. Smith, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you. I just feel that that language is inflammatory and implies that current systematic racism exists on purpose and is exacerbating disproportionate educational opportunities now. And I feel that our district has worked quite hard to not exacerbate disproportionate educational opportunities, and that our district, I understand that it's saying in the United States, but that I don't feel that systematic racism toward Indigenous people is something that's in our district right now, systematic. I'm sure that there are people who might have racism toward Indigenous people in our district, but as a system, I don't think we have it, and I just, I really wanna vote for this resolution, but I would feel more comfortable with that language removed.
Any further comment? Mr. Doran?
I appreciate the, the thought behind it, but I will oppose the amendment, and the reason is because it's referencing across the country, not saying about our district. And I, I think our district tries and works really, really hard, and I've seen that improve over all the time. I've had connections with the district over forty years. But that, I think, in the system, we have ways to go around our state and around the country, and visiting, teaching in a number of different schools outside and around the state, there are some real issues that are still either, still there, and they're part of the system. So we're getting better, but I don't think we're there, and I think it's really important that we can recognize what we are doing. And this, in a sense, right now as a district, we're trying to say we wanna make sure we stay away from that, and we, we make every effort that we don't have something systemic that harms any of our students or disenfranchises any of our students. But it is still an ongoing issue around the country, and I think that we need to be aware of that. We've seen real actions in some parts of the, of the country to remove and actually to tighten the system. So I think it's still very relevant, and so in some ways, yes, it makes me uncomfortable. It makes me check, but I'm okay, I'm okay with that discomfort. I think that's one of the advantages of this.
Ms. Anderson, and then Ms. Marotti.
Yes, I'd like to leave the language to be contained in, in the resolution as it is. I believe that the resolution simply reminds us to, of, of the acknowledgement, the value of what we're acknowledging, and we don't want history repeating itself. We're trying to strive to, to honor people and to recognize that they're here, they're human, they're part of the, the collective. And just this weekend, I had something happen to me that shouldn't have happened. I don't understand it, but it happens all the time. And I kinda lost it. I had myself together, but it was very annoying to me, and it was very hurtful as to why a person could not understand who I am. And so the resolutions that we have coming before us, it simply reminds us that we don't want history repeated, and that we're, we can be part of the change that needs to happen in our community and our lives. Thank you.
Ms. Marotti, and then Mrs. Matheson, and then Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I agree that our district has worked hard to combat the disproportionate educational opportunities, but I assure you that they are alive and well, and I'm happy to send the board studies done by our state that proves that this whereas is true, unfortunately.
Thank you, Ms. Matheson.
I just wanted to say that I feel that the language does, it creates a victim mentality, and I don't like it either.
Ms. Smith?
I just wanted to say I think it is also a good public reminder, the statement, as you said before, as Ms. Smith said before, it was that it's just a good reminder to the public that our district doesn't support it. I think it should stay.
All right, seeing no more comments, we are going to vote on the amendment, and a yes vote would be to remove the ninth paragraph. A no vote is to maintain that paragraph in the resolution. So yes, you, you, you strike it, the ninth paragraph. No, you keep the paragraph in. Mrs. Richardson, can we please get the vote? Ms. Smith? Can we get the, oh, sorry, I apologize. Go ahead. Ms. Smith? No? Colonel Alvarado?
No.
Colonel Suri?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
No.
Mrs. Sanderson?
No.
Ms. Marotti?
No.
Mrs. Luke?
No.
Motion failed. Thank you. We are back to the original motion. Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. Regarding the original motion and the resolution, this afternoon, coming into the meeting for the several hours leading up to the meeting, the board, myself, and everyone on the board received bunches of emails telling us, why are you approving critical race theory in your board meeting tonight? And it was like this mystery, like, what are people talking about? We don't have any curriculum on our agenda. We're not approving critical race theory on our agenda. And for the life of me, I could not figure out what sort of brought that on. And, you know, one of the people who sent the email, I recognized their name, and I reached out to them, and I said, like, that's not what we're doing. Why, why are you emailing us about this? Did you look at the wrong agenda? What's going on? And, you know, the person couldn't really articulate. It was like someone else told me, and, and so I'm writing to you. They were just trusting someone else. And, you know, it was kind of a little telephone game there. And then I just decided to just say, where could someone possibly come up with that? And I read through every item on the agenda, and when I see systematic racism and this, you know, other sort of charged language, and then I see at the bottom that we're encouraging our staff to research and make lesson plans and have guest speakers and activities and all of this stuff, I see that there are quite a few people in the public who are seeing that as critical race theory in our language, in this resolution. I really wanna vote for the resolution. I just, you know, will reiterate that I don't like to use the inflammatory language or give the public the impression that that is what we're doing with our, that we're doing some kind of backhanded critical race theory encouragement, which a huge flurry of emails that came to us tells me that this is something that the public thinks. So that's not what we're doing, right? I'm asking the board, that's not what we're doing, right?
Mr. Doran?
That is not what we're doing. We're not doing CRT. It's period. It's not, it's not there. This is not part of that. I think that we've already made a decision on that, that whereas, and so we wanna, we've made that decision, we've had that discussion, we need to move on. And I think that I would say that I will fully support this because terms, and actually this exact resolution has been passed multiple times without an issue. It has not been, there are some things that are out there, and this is a good opportunity for us to educate ourselves and the public and our students and our teachers about the different issues. And I think that's a real value of our conversation, and maybe one of those values of why we bring this up every year, even though the state recognizes Indigenous Peoples' Day as an official day, that we do it because it is important to have these, and that's, they're, they're not divisive terms. They're, they're not meant to be that way in any, in any sense, but it helps us put them in, in context. And so I, I believe that the wholeness of this is, and at any given time, a word or two I may not agree with, but I'm not, I may not, I'm going with the balance of what we're trying to do. And that's, that's important, whatever that issue is, and I'm very, I said, there are things that make me uncomfortable, and they should. But I am very comfortable with the, the balance of this across the board, and that what's conveyed here, I've seen in actuality, and I really think that our taking a stance as a district and as a board towards this is very important. So I will be voting yes on this.
Mrs. Sanderson, and then Mrs. Smith.
For just a final comment, the reason why I think this is also important is I can just say two names, and it's Kuyana Rose Whitehorse, Chasing Horse, and then our newly-elected Mary, Mary Patola. Both of these are historic appointments that have happened. I've picked up magazines forever. I can't remember the last time I picked up a fashion magazine and seen an Indigenous woman represented on a, on a fashion magazine, that's an international platform, with the newly-elected Representative Mary that's gonna be taking Dunyong's seat. Those are historical monumental achievements that, again, we are honoring accomplishments that we are seeing unfolding in front of our face every day. So I will support the amendment as written.
Mrs. Smith?
Thank you. I think I'm gonna support the amendment. I have voiced my concerns regarding it, but Mr. Doran is correct that the overall sentiment of the resolution is important. I just sincerely hope that our staff and our superintendent hear my voice and the voice of the people that emailed us who were concerned, that this is not an open door for, you know, chaos, I guess, or, or critical race theory as the public was concerned about. I mean, I, I really wanna vote for this resolution. So I, I think that, like I said before, it's super important to bring it up every single year, and, and that's why we bring all the resolutions up every year, as our community's not stagnant, and for the recognition, because without the recognition, it isn't even, it's just in a closet somewhere. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to put a little input in there that is in line with, I guess, the minority of the board, although three, three of, three of the members up here have expressed some apprehension towards this, as do I. Specifically, the language that's used, systemic racism. It's a shame that the one and only key word there that is inflammatory in nature was included in this resolution, because it, it's, it's something that's created a division, and matters such as these, we should be in agreement a hundred percent. And I just wanted to say, I would, I would like to, I also would like to support the resolution, but with the language that is, that's been insisted on being inserted, it's difficult for me, and I just, I find it, it's a shame. It's a shame that we can't be a hundred percent together on this. The terminology systematic racism breeds the poor me mentality, and that's what we, I as a parent and as a member on this school board would not want to instill in any of our students.
All right, thank you. I believe we are ready for the vote, and it goes to the original motion. A yes votes it in, and a no votes it down. Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 2023-06, Recognizing International Day of the Girl Child. Core Value: Center everything we do on the student and student learning. Resolution 2023-06, Recognizing International Day of the Girl Child is before the board for consideration. The International Day of the Girl Child on October 11th, 2022, is meant to bring awareness to the struggle many students, especially girls, experience in their quest to receive an education throughout the United States and other nations. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 2023-06, Recognizing International Day of the Girl Child.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Sanderson, will you please read the resolution?
Fairbanks North Starborough Board of Education Resolution 2023-06, Recognizing International Day of the Girl Child. Whereas awareness needs to be bought to the importance of education for all children, and whereas dedicating a day of celebration of education will give an opportunity for discussion on the subject of children's, mainly girls', lack of education in other places and nations. Whereas the International Day of the Girl Child is meant to bring awareness to the struggle many girls experience in their quest to receive an education. And whereas, by dedicating October 11th to, to the Day of the Girl Child, the Fairbanks North Starborough School District will join the world wide movement to support education for all children. to Support Education for All Children. And whereas the school district promotes the success of all students and understands the value of having educated advocates to help solve global problems. And whereas by appreciating and understanding how lucky they are to receive their education, students are encouraged to push themselves to their full potential. And whereas by promoting educational improvements in other places, we increase the number of teachers, professors, and tutors who can provide the next generation with a fulfilling education. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education for claims October 11th, 2022, as the International Day of the Girl Child, and encourages staff, students, and community members to promote the importance of equality education, to encourage students to fully embrace the opportunities granted them through a free public education.
Thank you, Ms. Sanderson. We will move over to public testimony. We will start with Julie Smith. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you'll have two minutes to testify.
Just making sure you can hear me again before I start.
We can hear you, thank you.
Okay. Again, my name is Julie Smith, that's S-M-Y-T-H, and I live in downtown Fairbanks. I would again like to ask you to vote for this. And since this is going to be a yearly thing, try to find a way to make this permanent so that way anybody who identifies as a girl, who is a student, who is listening in, does not have to, again, listen to the arguments that this is racist because it focuses on girls, even though we know we are considered a minority and are still treated that way by society. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. We next have Dave Halbrook. Dave Halbrook, are you online?
Yeah, yeah. It was telling me to have it unmute. I've never done this before.
Oh, that's fine. You're doing great. We can hear you. If you will just state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and then you will have two minutes to testify.
Sure. David Halbrook, H-A-L-B-R-O-K. I live in Fairbanks. Madam President and the board, thank you to those who read my email. I wasn't aware of the call-in option when I wrote that. I'm thankful for the principles and policies to keep the public informed and involved. I read reports in our nation of school boards and administrators moving parents away from being informed and involved. I appreciate this forum. I reviewed the list of days and months recognized by the school district since 2012, and that list continues to grow, and I assume it will. My question here is, are the things of these days, the, the list as a whole, focused on the fundamental ideals of educating our children? I've heard that the pandemic was a setback to the education of our children as a whole, meaning, again, we need to refocus on the edge, the fundamentals of learning. You, you can't educate children about everything. We're all limited by time. In my opinion, the number of days and months of recognition is a distraction from a focus on the fundamentals of education. So I encourage you to have a laser focus on those fundamentals. And for that reason alone, I, I hope this resolution is declined. Regarding this International Day in particular, what is a girl child? That betrays our common way of speaking, which makes me wonder if this is some kind of code. I've never heard of this day before. If it's code language for something that, that, that betrays trust. And I'll do some more reading about this day because I have a seven-year-old daughter who has her struggles. But if someone in the board would insert into the testimony the origins of this day and the prominent people promoting it, that would help. I believe we show that we value the education of all students by educating all students. I don't see that this International Day adds anything of value or of substance. I believe it's a distraction to a focus on the fundamentals of education, which shows we value education. And, thank you.
That is time. Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Clint Lehman. If you will come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
How about now?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, my name is Clint Lehman, L-E-M-E-N. I am from Goldstream. I have children that attend the schools here in the district. I don't know why we wouldn't want to have a day that helps celebrate women and children, and especially younger women and children, however they might identify. Why do we want to tear down young adolescent people by not giving them a little more of something that shows them they have value in society? I know it's one day. I know we have possible code language, and I don't know how that goes. But at the same time, we have girls who are bullied in school. We have statistics showing that women are paid less. We have everything across the board and world that show women are less equal. And I don't know why we want to take away one single day where we might possibly just show the importance of women to young women. And I encourage you all to vote for it.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next, we have Catherine Nimmer. Nimmer. If you will come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes.
Did I do it right so far?
You're doing great.
Losing your memory is tough. I have a granddaughter and-
Could you state?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did it wrong.
It's okay.
Catherine, Catherine Ann Nimmer, N-I-N-M-E-R. City of Fairbanks, Et Cetera, to the earth. I have a granddaughter who attended, started school here, public school in attendance. My children went to school here. Three of my children work for the school district and are very successful. They are very personally invested in what goes on here, as is their mom and dad. Delaney, my granddaughter, Delaney Reese, is currently, she went to college here. She got her, her degree in Fairbanks. She went to Washington for her master's degree, completed her bachelor's and master's by age 23. She's currently in Idaho. This is all thanks to Alaska in the long run. She's currently in Idaho, going to midwife school so she can work in the villages that badly need, I think, she thinks, midwives. She's coming back here when she finishes, I think, that's Grammy's plan. I celebrate her. She, I don't, I don't believe she has felt like any less of a person because she's a girl. And I don't like the resolution because it makes them, makes women, girls, sound, women, women slash girls, sound like they are somehow less, and I know the button. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
And thank you for your tolerance.
Is there, that is the end of our list for the public testimony? Are there any others within the room that would like to testify this evening? If you will come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
All right. My name is Sterling Beckwith, B-E-C-K-W-I-T-H. My area of residence is Fairbanks, Alaska, downtown Fairbanks. I think the bill, the, the vote should be passed, and it's not really of, it's, it's, it's not really a matter that really should be debated. And I know this may not seem relevant to the topic, but Stan Lee once quoted that the person who helps another individual out there simply because it must or should be done is without a doubt a real superhero. I do not, and I would agree, there are kids out there that, in which doing the right thing is going to help them. Whether we should or shouldn't help them is, shouldn't really be a debate. It should be happening because it's just simply the right thing to do.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. Any further testimony? If you will come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Hi, Kathleen Lauritzen, L-A-U-R-I-T-Z-E-N.
Could you speak a little bit louder so we could hear you?
Kathleen Lauritzen, L-A-U-R-I-T-Z-E-N, from North Pole. I, I really don't think we need this. I'm a woman. I have grandchildren, seven, boys and girls, lots of different races and stuff. We're all, we need to celebrate everybody, everybody together. If you want to have the child awareness and not making victims, everybody is stronger. We want to make sure that everybody has a good education, supporting everybody equally, no less, in every form. To keep separating the days and separating everything, I think just makes things sadder. And more people, you know, not even wanting to use the word victim, but just, why separate? We need to celebrate everybody with strength to do a better education. It's that simple, I think.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Any further testimony? If you will come up, state your name, spell your last name, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Thank you. I, I realize it's going to be a late night anyway, so why not chime in? Savannah Fletcher, I live in West Fairbanks. I just want to speak strongly in support of this resolution. I hear folks' concerns, but honestly, I, I read the language, and people are saying victim. This language does not mention victim once. This is about empowering women and recognizing the worldwide reality that girls are disproportionately denied access to schooling. It's not saying our borough is discriminating against women, but I do just want to call attention to the fact that girls in school, like I have a friend who just started as a nurse at Ryan Middle School. I'm really proud of her, and she has had so many girls come to her for, you know, like a tampon or a pad or things that make them feel like they have to be pulled out of class to take care of needs, they're not comfortable, or they don't have the tools and resources to take care of themselves for during a school day. These are still problems that face girls here, let alone worldwide, where some can't even attend school for a week at a time due to the fact that we menstruate. Additionally, I just want to flag, like I, I've worked with many kids in the foster care system, and often it's the girl in a family that is being parentified. And if a parent does need help with childcare, they might miss school. They might stay later to be with their sibling who's younger and not attending school, and their attendance might drop. This is still a problem in our community and worldwide. So I don't see this as a resolution that's saying we're victims. I see it as saying we are all valued, including the girls and women in our communities, and let's uplift them and everyone else, and all be appreciative that here we do have access to school for everyone. So please vote in favor. Thanks.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. Any further testimony? Seeing none, testimony is now closed. Any further?
Excuse me. I, I see a hand raised here, so I'm not certain if he's wanting to testify or not, so.
It states that only those in the room can testify unless they sign up previously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Administration, Mrs. Maline, do you have, does, oh, I apologize. Testimony is now closed. Mrs. Maline, anything further from administration?
We have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Anything further from the board? Mrs. Smith?
I am just going to enlighten us all on the odd language. So as the testifier who called in said, why do we say the International Day of the Girl Child? Why are we not saying the International Day of Girls or Recognizing Girls Right to Education Day or something like that? So I have argued this same resolution before. I will say better what needs to be said. I'm obviously voting against this resolution. I'm not against girls or women. I have four daughters and a new, brand-new daughter-in-law, and they are the future of our society. However, I did find out what the International Day of the Girl Child is. It is a UN resolution from 2011. And when we recognize the International Day of the Girl Child, we are recognizing a distinct and particular thing, which is the United Nations Resolution Recognizing the International Day of the Girl Child. It's not just some abstract thing. If we want to recognize girls as in the abstract, that would be great. Of course, we should all vote for it if we're just recognizing girls are special and that they have struggles. But recognizing a particular UN document that, I don't think anyone sitting here on this board has read the particular UN document that we are talking about resolving to teach our children in the classroom. And if I'm wrong, let me know. But I, I don't think that they have. Personally, it's quite a long document, and I read a lot of it. The United Nations is not a good organization. They are a population control, one-world-government totalitarian organization. Other sponsors of the International Day of the Girl Child are UNICEF, Family Care International, UN Population Fund, World Bank, World Health Organization, International Planned Parenthood Foundation, and the Population Foundation. Every one of these are population control-focused and supported at some point China's barbaric one-child policy and forced abortion and forced sterilization policies. How do you think that worked out for girl children? We cannot just vote for things because they seem nice. We must examine what we are really saying with our vote. I support girls and women. I am an empowered woman, and I have 10 children, and half of them are women. I'm not against women. But I support recognizing them as the most valuable resource on this planet, and I support empowering them to be women and to embrace their true place as the most powerful force on the earth. But I do not support this resolution. I would invite every person to read the book Invincible Family by Kimberly Ells if you want to know the true agenda of the organizations that sponsor the International Day of the Girl Child. And also, finally, I would ask my fellow board members to ask themselves, what even is a girl? And who exactly are we recognizing? And why don't we even know what the International Day of the Girl Child is when we have a resolution before us?
Ms. Marotti?
First, may I request the, the source that says that the UN is population control? If that is okay? Also, the resolutions, the resolution states that its purpose is to bring awareness to the struggle many girls experience in their quest to receive an education. The Global Partnership of Education states that 130 million girls are completely missing out on school. And by recognizing this situation for so many children, specifically girls, we bring awareness to it while developing empathy and acknowledging our privilege that I- our students have in their access to their education. So I fully support this resolution, and I appreciate the administration bringing it to the board every year.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you. I'm going to vote yes on this resolution, and there are things in here that specifically stand out to me as being significant. One is it's our own wording of what that support is for recognizing, um, the girl-child and the importance of, of that person within our society and within our world. But also, as I read through it, and I guess I would say, one of the things that every year I pick out something new that says, oh, wow, this is what stands out to me at this time, is, this is also a celebration of the opportunities that we try to provide in our community, in our district, as well as a country, towards universal education and having free public education. And that when we look at students, we try to encourage an understanding of current events and a knowledge of the world, as well as ourselves, our own country, that this is directed at that. It's that broad education for students, that understanding that we may have some opportunities here that in other parts of the world may not be available to all. It's certainly in the headlines on a weekly basis, especially in the last couple of years, that not all girls have the same opportunity to be educated. We do know that, and our students know, that, uh, girls in other countries have been shot in order to, because they went to school. So our students know about it, and this is an opportunity to also, as it says here, appreciate and understanding, and understand the, the opportunities that we have, and to become advocates, not only for themselves, but for their, uh, their peers, their neighbors, both locally and across the world. And as our students travel around the world, and we hope that they are prepared, we talk about being globally prepared, being internationally educated, to know the different countries and what people deal with in those countries. So I'm very glad to do this, and also as a parent of two daughters, again, it resonates with me that we want to celebrate what they've done, what we've done, but also encourage that we all look to provide that for as many girls throughout the world as we can, and it's standing in partnership with them.
Ms. Sanderson?
I, I would just like to point out in the, um, at the paragraph six, I think the wording, how lucky they are, I really think we need to choose, I, I just, when I first read it, that kind of bugged me. It's an opportunity, I don't, I, I just don't like that wording. And, and, you know, knowing that, you know, when we, we do hook up with world organizations, their platform is not always ours. I recognize the power of this resolution to at least acknowledge the struggles and inequity that young, uh, girls and women face, I think that's important for us to do that. But I think we would, should take a look at that, how lucky they are, and maybe choose the word opportunity to receive their education, that just sounds, you know, really off to me, maybe I'm by myself on that. Thank you.
Mrs. Smith?
Well, you all know me, so I will just, um, not even try to pretend that I'm not going to beat the dead horse of the fact that we are literally recognizing the UN document for the International Day of the Girl-Child, no matter how much you want to imagine that that's not what we're doing, or say that's not our intention, if that's true, remove all reference to the International Day of the Girl-Child, and just make a resolution that honors girls, and I'll support it all day long. But I will not, um, vote for any resolution that supports that UN document, which none of you have read or know what it means, when you're voting. What you say with your vote matters, and we're supposed to be teaching our children how to think, and how to look at information critically, and how to make a decision not based on emotion, but based on information, real information, not emotion. Emotion says, I love girl children, I want to support them, I want to vote for it, but information says, I will not support a UN document that is destructive to the reality of girls.
Ms. Marotti, Ms. Matheson, and then Mr. Doran?
I'd like to move to amend the resolution where it states whereas by appreciating and understanding how lucky they are to receive their education, to amend that to whereas by appreciating and understanding the opportunity they have to receive their education.
Second. Okay, we have an amendment on the floor, and we have it seconded. Would you like to speak to that?
Um, I think that, um, Ms. Sandersen said it better than I could, but I agree with her request to reword it, I'm honoring that.
Any other comments from the board before we go to the vote? Seeing none? A yes vote strikes how lucky they are and changes it to the opportunity they have, and a no vote keeps it as is. So a yes vote changes it, a no vote keeps it as is. Mrs. Richardson, can we get the vote?
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
No.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. So we are back to the original motion that's on the floor with the amended phrasing. Ms. Matheson?
Well, I'd like to change it from recognizing International Day of the Girl-Child to recognizing either our female students, or our girls, or our daughters, or, I don't know, however, however it pleases the board. I'd like it just to say, um, recognizing our girls.
Is there a second? Seeing no second, hearing no second, um, motion fails. Mr. Doran?
Thank you. I just want to address that the United Nations has many, many purposes, and, um, having been a social studies teacher, I do try to keep myself informed on, on these things, and so I will speak for myself, um, that this recognition is appropriate, it is not single-minded, and, uh, the, uh, and I think the way that we've made it pertinent to our community, um, and that, uh, I, I see a great opportunity to make sure that we are, as I mentioned earlier, partners around the world with an interest, especially as we have, um, students come to our country from many, many different places, and they have the opportunity to go to school, I'm thinking particularly of a student that I had who came as a fifth grader from Mexico, and had not had the opportunity to go to school. And working with her and her family so that, um, she didn't have to start out as a first grader, she was a fifth grader, but we could get her skills built over time, and, uh, she has actually done very, very well within our community, and I can think of many other students, but, um, those things say to me that this is a very important thing, and I'm glad that, um, it has been noted, and it, this is one of those international opportunities that we're part of, that many, many places around the world participate in this and recognize to try and, um, provide a very positive environment for the girl-child, so...
Thank you. Currently, I do believe we are ready for the vote. A yes will pass the resolution with the updated, um, statement paragraph, and a no will vote it down. Mrs. Richardson?
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mr. Sampson?
No.
Mrs. Matheson?
No.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Onto Resolution 2023-07, Recognizing LGBTQ History Month. Goals and objectives: Provide equitable opportunities in an inclusive environment where all students and staff are respected and feel welcome, safe, and supported. Resolution 2023-07 recognizes October 2022 as LGBTQ History Month and promotes a community where all students, staff, and community members feel supported and affirmed. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve Resolution 2023-07 regarding LGBTQ History Month.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Marotti, can we have you read the resolution, please?
I would be honored. Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education, Resolution 2023-07, Recognizing LGBTQ History Month. Whereas the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District does not discriminate on the basis of race, ethnicity, color, religion, creed, sex, age, national origin, physical or mental disability, marital status, changes in marital status, pregnancy, parenthood, sexual orientation, gender identity, disabled veterans and other eligible veterans, or any other basis of discrimination prohibited by local state, local state or federal law. And, whereas, numerous individuals in the LGBTQ community globally, nationally, and locally have made substantial contributions and accomplishments in our community. And, whereas, the LGBTQ community is a growing asset to the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District as students, staff members, and parents. And, whereas, the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District strives to foster the protection and the involvement of diverse groups by allowing students to acknowledge the history, culture, and contributions of LGBTQ individuals, role models, and historical events from across the country and community. And, whereas, numerous studies assert... Sorry, whereas, numerous studies assert that providing internal protections for LGBTQ students and staff members directly promotes academic and social success, as well as safety and security. And, whereas, the Fairbanks North Star Borough School District serves as a role model for inclusion, equity, protection, and representation for all of its students, staff members, and diverse communities. And, whereas, October is recognized as LGBTQ History Month to expose the prejudice and discrimination that LGBTQ people face based on sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender expression, and to celebrate their diversity and accomplishments from a source of empowerment and engagement. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Fairbanks North Star Borough Board of Education joins others in recognizing October 2022 as LGBTQ History Month, and encourages schools throughout the district to promote a community where all students and staff feel supported and affirmed.
All right, thank you. We will turn the time now to testimony. First, we have Casey Casort. Via Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Uh, if you will state your first name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
All right, my name is Casey Casort, C-A-S-O-R-T, and I'm a lifelong Fairbanksian, speaking tonight on behalf of myself. I graduated from West Valley High School in 2017 and from UAF in 2020. I'm here supporting the resolution recognizing LGBTQ+ History Month. When I was in high school, West Valley was my whole world. I joined the Gender Sexuality Alliance as a freshman, and I, that's where I finally learned how to think and talk about gender and sexuality. But the people involved with GSA were the only LGBTQ people I knew, and since all of my friends and role models existed in that environment, school board policy might as well have been the supreme law of the land. That means that resolutions like this one are monumental for students, whether they're good or bad. In this case, recognizing LGBTQ+ History Month is pretty obviously good, but hearing the anti-LGBTQ sentiments expressed by parents, or friends, or neighbors can be really deeply hurtful and isolating. So for that reason, I would love to use my testimony tonight to tell queer kids in Fairbanks that you are so deeply loved, there is so much more than the school board, and there's a vibrant queer community here that welcomes you and sees you for who you are and who you can become. So I urge the board to pass this resolution, I wish we did not have to bear our souls to ask for this most basic form of dignity, in this case, being allowed to see ourselves in history, not that any teachers are required to do so, or given any resources to prioritize that, but I would urge the rest of the folks testifying tonight to remember that students and children are listening, and every young person deserves to grow up feeling safe and loved and valued for who they are. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. Next, we have Julie Smith via Zoom. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Okay, once again, my name is Julie Smith, S-M-Y-T-H, and I live in downtown Fairbanks. I identify as Sibinyek, which is the third gender of the Anupiat culture, because gender is cultural, but gender is also something that pulls people into the LGBTQ+ community, and I am one of those people. I would be considered trans in, in the English language, because I was assigned female at birth, even though in my culture, we are genderless until we're old enough to tell our parents what gender we are, and then they start training us for our roles based on that. And I think that it's important for children to have role models, because I myself cried when I saw that Mary Peltola won and was representing me and my family in, in federal, in the federal government, because it was someone who looked like me, and someone whose culture was not the same, but similar enough, that it, it moved my soul and my heart, and I know that that also happens to me when I learn about LGBTQ leaders and people throughout history, and I think it's important for children to be able to have role models as well, so that way they can see a future for themselves, even if people may not agree with how they identify, because what matters most is the student. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. Next, we have Putt Clark.
He was on earlier, but I don't see him here right now.
If you'll just let me know if they join up later. Next, we have Joy Witt. Joy, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello.
If you will state your first name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, you will have two minutes to testify.
Hello, my name is Joy Witty, W-I-T-T-E. I am in North Pole. I am a mother of a graduate of the class of 2022. My daughter graduated with a 4.2 GPA, honors, had the top 10% of her class. She was accepted in UAF and is pursuing a degree that will dictate her future completely to Alaska and the longevity of its culture. However, Alaska has failed my daughter. After acceptance to UAF, she was tested on her levels in reading, science, and math for placement. She ranked so drastically low in math that her freshman year, she had to take not one, but two math courses just to be where she should upon entering college. This will cost my child in funding, and it wasted time. The school system has failed her. The university stated most children entering college in the last, over some of the last two years are truly behind. This is a national epidemic. COVID has been blamed, however, it's just another distraction, just like the focus today on LGBTQ. I personally identify as LGBTQ, but it does not define me more than being a mother. When social distancing was in place and school was online, I saw entire English classes of my daughter's high school classes debating on if the kids would rather have money or a flying carpet. That was an entire class period. I've seen teachers yell and curse at students. These are not the people I want teaching children about LGBTQ. Schools have lost focus. When scores go up and we are in line with other countries, then propose bringing up such a topic. But as far as now, no. Time to get back to basics: math, science, English, history. The focus should be on educating all children in areas needed, and this is not needed, not now. Thank you.
Mr. Doran?
Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Witty, for testifying tonight. Just a question, do you understand that there is no curriculum attached to this, this particular one, this resolution, as to affirm that everyone is welcome in our schools?
And I do understand, however, I don't feel that the students should have any outside focus that's going to distract. This is a huge distraction for the children. And ultimately, they need to be focused on learning everyday things, not on praising any particular group. Everyone should be there to support each other. It should not be about identifying. They are there to gain an education. So yes, I understand there's not a curriculum, but that I simply think that the students need to be there to receive an education, and that's where the focus should be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dave Halbrook via Zoom.
Yes.
Hi, Dave. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Ma'am, David Halbrook, H-A-L-B-R-O-K. I live in Fairbanks. Indigenous people and girl children get one day, and this gets a month. Regardless of your position, I hope you'd consider that. This is a moral issue, and I think we all agree on that. But from there, we are divided as a community, state, nation, and world, and that's painful. Account LGBT and Qs is people equally worthy of my love alongside my neighbor. None of you know me, so those may be only words to you. I share community life with them, but I know of no unique or new principle or ideal which contributes positively to our society that's unique to them, and I do not trust the unique principles that I have witnessed and they promote. That doesn't mean they have nothing of value to offer. They're excellent mathematicians, engineers, musicians, et cetera, and thereby contribute to our community in a valuable way. But being L, B, G, T, or Q contributes nothing to their excellence in those areas. Promoting this History Month promotes the values generally promoted by the community, and you will push families out of your system by doing so, and if that's your purpose, so be it. The promotion of such values deepens my distrust of the borough's values. In a separate controversy last year, Board Member Smith openly acknowledged a lack of trust in the district and why so many Fairbanks students are leaving public schools, if she was quoted accurately. I would apply those comments to this resolution. When it's passed, if that's my opinion, I would discourage parents from entrusting their children to this system. This is not fun, or easy, or comfortable for me. Most civilized people of the past have engaged in this discussion by including God in it and by excluding Him, we lose. Consistent with the district's stated goals and objectives, I hope you celebrate and support the diverse ways my family engages in partnering with you for the success of the students of our community.
Mr. Halbrook?
That success is my goal, too.
That's time.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Rose O'Hara Jolly via Zoom.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
We can. If you will just state your first name, spell out your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Thank you. My name is Rose O'Hara Jolly, O apostrophe capital H-A-R-A hyphen J-O-L-L-E-Y. They den pronouns on Lower Tannenada Dene Lands in College Hills area, here representing myself. So I am here in support of this resolution. In the past, I have shown up to testify in support and tried to create a space of joy and support for queer youth. But frankly, I'm so disappointed and embarrassed to be a part of this district at this point. I'm one of the original authors of this resolution. I served volunteering my time for years on the Diversity Committee and volunteered my time and expertise to this district in many ways. And when you sit there and you wonder why you can't hire and retain staff and teachers, this is why. When you sit here and you question simply acknowledging that something exists, when you give so much space to those that are misinformed, I can't understand why you don't understand why no one wants to work here. You have a critical staff and teacher shortage, not because there are not enough qualified teachers in the district, it is because people in this district are tired of working for a school board that does not live up to the values they claim. I have had countless conversations with folks in Fairbanks. When they learn, I used to be a teacher, they say, I was too. And we share our joy and love and stories of teaching. And ultimately, I ask, if you love teaching so much, why don't you still do it? And every single time, they say, I got fed up with the school district. I want to end speaking to children's and families and staff listening. You all should be welcome here, and your district has let you down. I hope that the board votes to support this resolution, but honestly, this discourse every year is so embarrassing and ultimately keeps teachers and staff from wanting to work in the district and families from moving here. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Ms. Matheson?
I just need clarification on the logo that's on your, I guess it's your avatar. Is that the Planned Parenthood logo?
I am here representing myself. The computer Zoom logged me in as this.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Ryan Puruker. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes.
Is this on? Check. Check. Hello?
Green light.
Hello, check.
There we go.
Hi, Ryan Puruker, P-U-R-U-C-K-E-R, Fairbanks. We're all witnessing critical theories of identity being put into practice right now. It's called praxis. You don't teach it in the curriculum. You apply it to how you teach. I don't know if you're aware of this, but right now, we're witnessing queer theory. It starts with a month for celebration, but then it remains in classrooms. The purpose of DEI, Diversity Equity Inclusion, is to push critical theories of identity onto children, make them conscious of their oppression. This is identity Marxism. Become familiar with the published academic literature from gender studies, career studies, and queer theory. Judith Butler, Gail Rubin, Eve Shadwick, and Michelle Foucault. This is how you put a queer theory into practice. Sexualize children as early as possible, destabilize them, and then groom them politically. Children, so queer is defined as an identity without an essence. And children have the privilege of growing up normal. This is oppressive to anyone who doesn't identify as normal. They have to abolish what it means to be normal, because they believe that upholds an oppressive society. They write about this openly in all their academic literature. We see in videos from Libs of TikTok, teachers openly broadcast what they're going to say and do to your kids, and they're going to keep it private from parents. They're insane. You can look at that person and say, I don't want this person in my class. Like, what are you doing? Over 200 teachers have been fired last year for sexual misconduct with students. Yeah. In Anchorage, there's a policy where they don't have to tell you a kid's pronouns if they've been groomed by this gender ideology. I saw it the other week. They list, what are your pronouns at home, or what are you referred to at home, what are they calling you in school? And they do not have to tell the parents this is going on. Parents find this out numerous times when their kid attempts suicide. They have no idea this is going on. This is a perversion of Title IX laws.
Can we keep it to
I'm sorry.
our district and keep the language more respectful, please?
Oh, sure.
And time. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Were you aware that our district also has that policy?
No, I just became aware of this at Anchorage last week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Katron. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Let me try.
There we go.
Now, is it on?
Correct.
Okay. My name is Kathy Katron, C-A-T-R-O-N. I live in Fairbanks, and I've been in law enforcement for 22 years. And I just wanted to say I'm fully supportive of the resolution to recognize LGBTQ plus History Month and for the Diversity Council. I'm just going to read from this. Assembly put it's important. It's a more tangible acknowledgement that we as a community exist, that we struggled to get where we are now, and that those struggles and triumphs add value to the broader Fairbanks community. Everyone benefits when we openly discuss and shine a light on our own past. In my distant past, I was homeless. My parents kicked me out of our family home because I was gay, and they thought I should just not be gay. It took many years for us to reconcile and for me to value myself and for my parents to fully understand that my being who I am is not a choice. I guess that's why I'm here today, to remind you that the decision you make will have an immediate effect on young people that may be struggling to see themselves as valued human beings. The commitment to educate future leaders lies in your hands right now. Do you validate them and tell them that they matter, or do you let them struggle and see if they make it on their own? I wish I didn't feel compelled to ask you all to be brave and vote in support of this simple act of recognition. That's all it is. It shouldn't be something that takes an act of bravery on any one person's part. It's just the right thing to do. I think someone said that earlier, and he quoted Stan Lee, so that was pretty good. Again, it's just the right thing to do. It's just one single act of kindness to an underrepresented and marginalized community. Please vote in favor of this resolution and acknowledge LGBTQ plus people and their contributions to our society. Our history adds value to everyone's future. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this evening.
Hi.
Next, we have Leslie Fails. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Okay, the green light is on. Hi, I'm Reverend Leslie Ahuva Fails. Last name is spelled F-A-I-L-S, as in the amendment fails. I reside in the borough, and I'm the minister of the Unitarian Universalist Fellowship of Fairbanks and also a parent of a child in the district. I am grateful that our district has in the past and may yet again resolve to acknowledge LGBTQ History Month. You know, I had never thought about doing resolutions each year in this way, but I think it was Ms. April Smith who said it this time, that like, every time that we take the time to acknowledge the inherent worth and dignity of our kids, doing that over and over again has value. And I had never really thought of it in that way, but for that reason, I really think that maybe doing this yearly is a good thing, even though we have to hear some really rough stuff every time this comes up. I ask that you continue this tradition this year on behalf of the queer and transgender young people from the church that I serve who come to me for pastoral care and support, and their family members who lose sleep out of their concern for their children's well-being. Our job here as parents and teachers and concerned community members isn't to debate the validity of any particular kind of child. Our job is to support them in their educational journeys and above all, to keep them safe. As a minister and a person of faith, I believe that these precious children, like all of us, come by their inherent worth and dignity simply by virtue of being who they are. They know who they are in their bones, and that knowledge of their identity does not come from someone else, and it's not the source of their struggle or pain. So I want to thank the school board for your service and for your attention to this concern. My prayer for our community is that one day we will be able to turn from our fear of one another and our mistrust of one another towards how we might better love one another, and above all, especially in this case here in the school board, how we might come to value the lives of every single one of our children. And I was going to say that, you know, trans kids, LGBTQ kids, we see you, we love you, we hear you, and that's true. But more important today, it feels important to say, if anyone in this district or anyone here tonight, if you have questions about what all of this stuff means, and LGBTQ and trans, and if I am somebody that you can call or text and talk to, 907-371-4798.
Time.
That's fine. I'm just saying.
Thank you.
I'm willing to talk, and
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Dan Beck via Zoom. Dan, can you hear us? Dan, can you hear the board?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, you will have two minutes to testify.
Yes, my name is Dan Beck, B-E-C-K, and I live on Ileson Farm Road.
Thank you. You have two minutes.
Great. I have a background of about 30 years in public education here in the state, and I strongly disagree with the school board and the district getting into moral and political issues, when we need to focus in on academics. The United States has fallen behind. Everyone's fallen behind because of the pandemic. We need to focus in on what's important. We need to celebrate everybody, but that's not the role of schools. That's the role of community.
Recording stopped.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sorry, continue.
Okay, I got interrupted there.
Wait, one, sorry, wait one moment. Is the recording still continuing? Your recording? Okay, perfect. We just had an issue with recording, but we are recording, so please continue.
Okay, I'm not sure. That's the only point that I wanted to make, was that please focus in on academics and leave moral issues, political issues, out in the community. Your role is to educate and educate all students. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. Next, we have Clint Lemon. Thank you for your testimony this evening. Next, we have Clint Lemon. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence again, and you will have two minutes.
Yeah, hi, my name is Clint Lemon. I live in Fairbanks, and it's L E M E N. First of all, I'd like to state off that Ms. Smith stated earlier that we should be using logic and facts, and we shouldn't be using emotion. And I've heard the word morals thrown around, which implies to me people are using a book that was written by man. And that isn't facts. We hopefully are not voting on all this based upon, let's pick a book, the Bible, right? Because that's using emotion. So, I'm highly suggesting that we vote to pass this based upon just facts, like Ms. Smith stated, not feelings or emotions. And that, I remember the first LGBTQ plus showcase that went up in the library back in 94, 95, right around there, there was a protest. I was a teenager, senior or junior, and I went as a counter protest. It's the first time I got involved was for the LGBTQ community. As a teenager, I was not. And I'm seeing it now, reverting back to where we just want to take all those things away from people that have been fought for since I was a teenager, 25 years ago, going to school at Lathrup. So I encourage all of you to leave your emotion and your made-up morals from a book out of everything and do the right thing and vote for humanity and compassion and empathy. Because at the end of the day, that's all we have. Books come and go, gods come and go. People are always here and they always care.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Greg Trevine. Do we need a quick moment?
Yeah, if you could give us just a second.
Sure.
Get our technical issues worked out.
We're going to... We will come back to that person. Catherine. If you would like to come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you'll have two minutes to testify.
Catherine Ninmer, N I N M E R. Catherine Ann Ninmer, N I N M E R. I live in Fairbanks, still. I have a little trouble with this particular resolution. I come from another generation than most of you. Things were different. Why do I need to even know what your sexual preferences or inclinations or whatever it is? Why do I need to know? Why do I need to push that onto, or why do I think it should be pushed onto children that really don't understand if they care? It's the old, "Boys play with trucks, girls play with dolls." That's not true. My husband of 53 years had a doll. He also had three sisters. I had no brothers, but I had the coolest truck. Did that make me change into anything else? I don't think so. I'm proud of what I am. I'm proud of the people I know. Most people, I don't know what their sexual preferences are. Why do we need to push this into the kids' classroom where they should be focusing on reading and writing and learning to play with each other? Play is so important. And it just, I have trouble with it. I'd like to see it, and I don't know your protocol, I'm sorry. I'd like to see it what we used to call tabled for thought and consideration. They don't need a committee. Just, everybody think it out.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for your time.
So I think we are ready to get the person that's online.
Perfect.
Up. So we'll need justice to do that for us.
It's Greg Trevine. Hi, Greg, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can hear you. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, you will have two minutes to testify.
Hi, my name is Greg Trevino, T R E V I N O. I live in downtown Fairbanks.
Can we, we have other people who are currently... I apologize, Greg, if you could just give us one moment.
No worries.
No, I don't.
Yeah, but like, I'm probably done.
I'll walk down to the street and see if it's a bull, and then I'll give Brian a call if it is.
I'm going to hang up here.
It's on a property.
All right, Greg. We will give you your full two minutes now. Thank you for your patience.
Absolutely. I'm excited to be able to talk tonight. I am in full support of this resolution. LGBTQ plus history is American history. Denying that is denying facts. It's denying our reality. We are talking about schools. Schools need to teach what is true, what is factual, what is actually going on. LGBTQ plus people exist. They are crucial to American history and American identity today. Furthermore, denying their existence or refusing to allow them to exist puts kids at risk. People who are part of the community are much higher at risk for self-harm. Voting to allow this to pass lets them know that they are loved, that it is allowed to be LGBTQ plus, that they are not alone, and will actually make a noticeable difference in our schools. That is all I have to say today. Please, I implore you to vote to pass this, and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony this evening and your patience with our technical issues. Next, Ms. Sandy Ryan. Was this the one that you wanted to speak on? Next one? Okay. Gail McBride. If you will state your name, spell your last name, and give us your area of residence, you have two minutes.
Gail M C B R I D E, and I live in Fairbanks. I first asked the school board to not pass this resolution three years ago. Across the country in the last three years, we have seen parents become a mare of the sexual and racial content in their children's classrooms. Schools hiding their encouragement to transgender children from their parents. Schools with transgender closets to encourage secrecy from parents. Drugs given to minors to help with their transitions, rendering them sterile. Exposure of children's hospitals performing permanent disfiguring surgeries on minors. Hysterectomies, double mastectomies on children as young as 13. A Supreme Court justice who does not know what a woman is. This is evidence of a much larger picture, as Mr. Puruker referred. Deliberately exposing children to this agenda is nothing more than abuse. They do not deserve for their innocence to be stolen from them when they do not even understand what this is about, let alone the lifelong consequences by the adults who claim to be their protectors. This is little more than marketing to children by a well-funded movement. There is no informed consent offered about the potential lifelong dangers in these lifestyles. Enough time has gone by now that we're hearing more and more stories of young adults detransitioning, and their stories are horror stories of mastectomies while teens unable to make wise decisions, left with no future for a family. This does not belong in our schools. These matters are far beyond the training of schoolteachers who are trained to teach academics, not emotional and mental instability. I ask you, as decision-makers in the community, to make decisions concerning such serious matters based on science, fact, evidence, cost-benefit analysis, instead of emotion. You cannot escape the responsibility and accountability to the children for your decision to continue to expose them to this insidious agenda or to stop it.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Gretchen Gordon. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, you will have two minutes to testify.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Gretchen Gordon, G O R D O N. I live in Fairbanks and a student in the district. LGBTQ History Month is an important way to show LGBTQ plus young people that they are valued. LGBTQ folks have always existed. They have contributed meaningful to our history and our country, and they belong, and they deserve to be celebrated. When our youth don't feel valued or validated or feel like they don't belong, they can't learn, and they can't reach their full potential. I urge you to pass the resolution in support of LGBTQ plus History Month. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. That concludes all those who have pre-signed up for testimony this evening. We still have a little bit of time. If there was anyone in attendance this evening that would like to testify. If you will come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes.
Thank you. Pete Penny, P I N N E Y, and I live in downtown Fairbanks. And it's interesting that you use the reference of when things aren't celebrated, then they go into the closet. And that's actually a reference that comes from this community, right? And that I think is true. I was kind of concerned about, oh, how come we have to bring this up every year? But it does allow visibility.
Recording in progress.
And that's important for kids. I can speak from my own experience of raising two kids. Well, actually, foster kids, they came to me as young teenagers, but they had... My older son didn't have these kinds of words to live by or to see that he felt supported and affirmed. And he still feels that that wasn't a good thing for him. My younger son actually came to this room several years ago and testified. He sat in the audience, and he heard these things that were, he was saying, "That's not me. That's not who I am." And he actually had the courage to get up and tell the folks here how important it was that he got to see those words, and he felt affirmed. And he did well in school because he was no longer other. There's a strong sense of other for these kids. I spent 30 years in higher education, and I've been faculty advisor for the GSA at the university and supported GSAs at different schools. And I've seen this over and over again, where they feel, when they feel heard, when they feel honored and affirmed, they do better. And that's, I cannot think of a time when that didn't happen. So I encourage you to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Any further testimony this evening? If you will come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Name is Sterling Beckwith. I live in downtown Fairbanks, B E C K W I T H. I do apologize, my previous speech was meant for this moment, but one thing I would like to point out is that being LGBTQ is... There is research and scientific evidence that it is encoded into our DNA. A gay man doesn't just wake up and say, "I want to be a gay man." They are born genetically gay. Everyone, every queer is born a queer. They don't make that choice for themselves because if they could, they probably would, granted that they have to deal with the discrimination. I believe it would be discriminatory to not let, to discriminate against teachers or students for being queer. It would be the right thing to do to go forward and help others, the queers that need it.
Thank you for your testimony. Any further testimony before we close public testimony? I see one more. If you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you'll have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Jeff Walters. Last name spelled W A L T E R S. I live in Goldstream. And I would also like to support this resolution. I've been a counselor in the school district for quite a while. I was a science teacher before that. And I've dealt with a wide variety of students over the years. And I do know that, I mean, I've heard people speak that things like this can be a distraction for the district and that we need to focus, but I have seen students who have trouble focusing or are distracted because they don't feel safe or they haven't felt safe in the past or they haven't felt recognized or honored. And so because we're a public school system and because we honor everybody, I just think it's wonderful that we can have the opportunity to honor and celebrate all of our people, all of our students in different ways and at different times, and bring them to the forefront. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening. Any further? If you will come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence.
Hey, Kathleen Lauritzen.
If you could speak louder into the mic. I know, it's hard. If you will please...
Kathleen Lauritzen, L A U R I T Z E N, Fairbanks, I mean, North Pole, Oregon, Fairbanks. I'm a little confused. I'm not really necessarily, you know, for it gets us... I think, as I stated before, all children need to be taught and loved to get stronger. With these three things that we're setting at, I'm a little confused. We have a month for this one. And gee, I kind of think on the first one, the digits, why don't we have a month for that too? Because that's wonderful Alaskan history, and we have, you know, Black History Month, we have the other. I mean, that's huge, Alaskan history. We should have a month of that, of celebration, and more education because that is huge for Alaskan history. And that's US history. That's the whole shebang. I mean, that's awesome. I'm just confused that, you know, we have one, it's just one day. We have one, it's a day, but it's really girls, and I really have the wording on that. I just think that whole thing needs to be reworded to make that right because it's all... And this one, there's, you know, we just need to love all children. And we have a month on that. I just, I could just think some of the things are just, it just can be more expanded. And gee, we have one that we could have a powerful month of education that adds to Alaskan history. I just think we're missing huge opportunity on some, and the other one just needs to be reworded.
I don't have... Thank you. We have one more that was able to come online to testify. And it's Alyssa Kitano. Quint, I apologize. Quinton. If you will. Alyssa, if you will state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Hi, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, well, thank you so much. My name is Alyssa Quinton, Q U I N T Y N E. I live in Fairbanks. I'm here representing myself, I'm a community organizer here, a creative, and I am a former diversity committee member, and one of the co-authors of this resolution before you. I'm kind of sitting here unfortunately at home with maybe a stomach ulcer, so I feel bad that I'm not there in person. But I just want to give a moment to honor the friends that I lost to suicide, who are in the queer community, because we did not have resolutions like this. And I sent in some written testimony because I didn't know if I would be able to make it. But I really just want to let you all know on the board, the first day that I joined the diversity committee and saw the challenges that were set upon the district was the first day that I recognized what I needed to do. And with the help of my committee members, we authored this, you know, this resolution with so many community members, and leaders, and churches, and nonprofits, and even people sitting in that room today, to create this resolution as to what it is. And I am proud that it is here, and I am proud of all of you who have spoken. I am sorry that there are people in this community that don't see you, but I see you. And that is why I put my heart into that resolution, because you deserve to be here. And you deserve everything that this community, and everything that this district has to offer. And I will continue to fight for you, regardless of what this board chooses to do tonight. So I just want to let you know that, and I want to let everybody else that is listening know that, that I am here for you. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. Any further testimony? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. I'd like to turn the time to administration. Is there anything else that you would like to add?
No, nothing further.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to turn to the board. Ms. Marotti.
Thank you, and thank you for those that provided testimony tonight. LGBTQ youth are our neighbors, they're our friends, they're our family members. And anything that we can do to support their wellbeing contributes to the flourishing of our community as a whole. As a member of the LGBTQ plus community, I am grateful for a school district that recognizes the inherent worth and dignity of our queer students and staff. And with that being said, I fully support this resolution.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, and then Ms. Matheson.
I'm kind of happy, because last year I came here and testified on this exact topic, and now I don't have to follow the two minutes restriction. I'm almost positive that every single board member here has already made up their mind on how they're going to vote. But I thought I'd share my experience anyways. I grew up homeschooled, and then I went to a private school. And then my first ever experience of public school was in sixth grade. And that was also the first time that I've ever heard the F slur. That was also the first time I ever saw kids experience homophobia, transphobia, all that. You always hear teachers saying, that's a bad word, don't say it. Be nicer, choose a different word. You see the posters that the teachers put up in their classroom, they give you better words to say, rather than saying, that's okay. It's like trashy, foolish, stupid, words like that. And all they do when those kids say, that's so gay, stuff like that, it's just, hey, don't do that. I don't agree with that. I think that during an LGBT History Month, you should be saying, hey, don't do that, because of that word's history. There's a meaning behind it, you shouldn't just be throwing around words. I want them to teach about queer history. I want to know, not just, this person was important, oh yeah, and they were gay. I want to know, this person was important, and they were silenced because of the fact that they were gay. I want to know about Baird Rustin, who was a civil rights activist, who was kept in the shadows because of the fact that he was a gay, that he was gay. I want to know about Marsha P. Johnson, a queer right activist, who was a prominent figure in the Stonewall uprising. I want to know about them, and I want to know about how they changed society. And I don't want to have to seek that out on my personal time. I think that those are extremely important figures in history. And just because they were queer, they were pushed down, and I can't hear about them in school. And it's discouraged by the district to talk about them in school. I think that just for one month, you can add something. You don't have to take anything away from your lessons, because I know that there's those extra five minutes in the end of classes, that you could add that one, oh yeah, we're just going to really quick look at some prominent figures. We're going to learn about what happened in the 1960s. We're going to learn about this. I don't think it's hard, and I don't think that it's any kind of critical race theory, any kind of personal invasion. Queer History Month is not teaching your kids to be gay. It's teaching your kids how to respect queer people, and how they've changed society, and how just society has changed because of queer people. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Matheson.
That was wonderful, Ms. Smith. And I've got a question for you. Shouldn't we be respecting everyone every day, not just within that one month?
Through the chair, you can go ahead and answer.
Okay. I absolutely think that we should be doing this every day. But as adding this extra month, I'm sure not all parents have, want queer history to be taught every single day. I would love it, but I know that parents are going to throw fuss if you just make it into an everyday thing. So as this little thing of just one month, it can make a huge difference for so many kids' lives. And seeing that queer representation is what so many people need.
Go ahead, Ms. Matheson.
I will not be supporting this resolution, only because as a child who was molested and raped up until the age of 15, I cannot support a resolution because of the national support that the LGBTQ community gives to MAPS. MAPS, Minor Attracted Persons.
Mr. Doran.
Thank you. I'm very glad to support this, and I'm very glad that we've done it for multiple years now. I believe it's been, it's at least four, maybe five. This might be the fifth year. The thing that resonates with me is that this very, very much says that all students and staff, and I would say parents, should feel supported and affirmed. And that's the focus of this. And as people brought it forward for consideration initially, and since, that's been really the emphasis, is making sure everybody in our schools are welcome. And the importance of this goes back, for me, as a principal, when I had a parent come in. And quite honestly, he was very hesitant to come into our school. He was enrolling his students, his children. And he kind of had back, and when as we were talking, et cetera, kind of get to know each other, and what we would do. He finally voiced his big concern, his hesitancy, because the boys had two dads. And he said, my partner is afraid to come in. We were not welcomed in a previous school, very definitively not welcomed. And I said, well, it doesn't matter, you're the parents. I don't care, you're the parents. And we want, bring them in. I want to meet them, our teachers want to meet them. As it turned out, they had adopted, I forget the exact number, number of boys who had been traumatized in their youth, had been basically tossed away, and would not have had the help, the example, the care that those boys got, and to watch them grow into positive young men, work through their anger, their trauma of when they were younger, and in other situations. But that resonated with me. Why would a parent be afraid to come into our school? And we need to make sure that each and every parent is welcome. When this first came, it was so impressive. The students who came and testified, who said, this makes a difference to me. The students who came on behalf of their friends, and said, this is important for my friends. I think Ms. Smith just actually was an example of those students coming forward. And that's what's important with this. And I do have to say, over the years, that people who have come and testified before us, either in support or in opposition to it, have tried to be respectful, have worked to be, say what they feel. And I think that's important. But to also respect others. And I think that's what this is all about. It's respecting them, it's not teaching anything here. It's saying, you are welcome. And that it makes a difference to a segment of our student body, our staff, our parents. They need to know they're welcome. And unfortunately, there are moves, even more so now in other parts of the country, that really are there to disenfranchise, or to cut groups out. Our community, and I've said this about Fairbanks so often, we have our bumps and bruises, but we pull together as a community. And this is one of those examples, to say that we do value you. And we want you to know that when you walk in the doors of our school, you are welcome. And so this is very important to me. I've seen it make a real difference for parents to know they're welcome. Doesn't matter how they might identify or otherwise, they're welcome. For our students, most importantly, that they have spoken to us over the years. That this indeed is important to them, to their friends, and to their community. And if it makes a difference, they're going to learn better, which is really the bottom line. We want kids to learn, and they have to be, they have to feel they are in a safe place to learn. And so I am very glad to support this.
Before we move on, can I get an extension?
Move to extend to 10 o'clock.
Second.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we are extended to 10 p.m. Also, I just want to remind the board, we still have three more policies to go through, as well as two reports to do tonight. So in lieu of time, we do have two people in the queue, Ms. Sanderson and Ms. Smith, if you would like to, and Colonel Alvarado. And then I would like to call for the vote. Well, I would like to turn the time over for the vote. Ms. Anderson.
Just real quickly, when I was in my classroom, you know, it was about making a safe space for students. And I did have the privilege of working with students who were LGBTQ, and some that were transitioning. All that was new to me, and to walk through it with one of the students, I was able to go to their graduation. But I, I'll let you know that if that student did not, would not have had my room to come to, with me speaking to staff, and helping facilitate their work, projects, and different things that they needed to do, and just encouraging that student to come to school, and be at school, and to be present, and engage in their own learning. Because I was able to provide this safe place for this student, I had the privilege of going to that student's graduation. And again, something that I learned, it was very, to witness it was, you know, kind of mind-blowing in some respects. But just to know that the student felt safe, felt that I valued them, and that I provided a place where they could continue their education, that was important to me. Thank you.
Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I, last year, we had the same exact resolution, which I support bringing in every year. And last year, I really wanted to vote for this resolution, but the testimony turned me against voting for this resolution. The testimony has, I don't know, learned or changed. However, I will not be voting for this resolution. I wish that we could separate the people from the agenda. And LGBTQ History Month, you know, just like my issue with the International Day of the Girl Child. I mean, it has an agenda, it has a particular organized agenda. And I'm going to vote against this resolution, because the name of it is Recognizing LGBTQ History Month. And the people who are members of the LGBTQ community are worthy, they are valued. And it is really important to me to recognize that. But to also say that I will not vote for this, because I'm not voting for the agenda of an adult organization. I'm sorry that children who are suffering from all kinds of injustice are at the mercy of an adult agenda. And that I would encourage our students to not give the school board power over your humanity, and who you are, and your dignity. And no one has that power over you, except for yourself. So if it was true that we wanted to simply honor and recognize our students, who are LGBTQIA2S+ I've been to lots of awareness classes, I really try to understand this subject. And if it was true that all we wanted to do was honor those students and recognize them, why can't we make a resolution honoring and recognizing our students? We need to pay attention to the words that we say when we make our resolutions. And that we should make a resolution honoring and recognizing our students, their contributions, the history of people like them, great. But don't attach it to official LGBTQ History Month, which has an agenda. And also, due to the testimony last year, I did change my vote when I intended to vote for this, because people came in and said, this resolution is empowering me to do X, Y, Z in my classroom. And it's empowering me to do X, Y, Z in my school. And Mr. Doran has repeatedly pointed out that this resolution has no attachment for encouraging people to do activities in the classroom, or to, you know, do any celebrations. It's simply a recognition. But immediately following our recognition of LGBTQ History Month last year, which we did as a board, there was a big LGBTQ assembly with information, and activities, and education in the classroom, all the things that were, that the diversity committee worked so hard to get out of this resolution, so that it was passable. And it's like, the agenda cannot be trusted. The children can be trusted, the humans can be trusted, but the agenda cannot be trusted. And I will not vote for this, even though I love and support and appreciate the humans that are involved in the community.
Colonel Alvarado.
All right, so today, for us, for me, today is not about recognition. And I can't speak to proliferating an agenda. And that's really, frankly, not my area of responsibility. But it's been my vote to support the recognition of indigenous people, the Day of the Girl Child, and LGBTQ, not because it's my personal stance, but because it, but more so because I want it understood that except- I want it understood that acceptance, respect, and dignity and recognition is consistent with our DOD standards. As a DOD, we're privileged to be a cross-section of the society we come from, from all diverse corners of our national fabric. The reality is, is it's important for us in the DOD to foster an environment and culture of acceptance, respect, and recognition. We need folks who are different to feel accepted into our national defense apparatus. Acceptance starts before they get to us. The reality is, we've not always been the greatest at acceptance, but we are now, and for in some time, we've been fully committed. Thank you.
Thank you. In lieu of time, I would really like to go ahead and move towards the vote. Ms. Richardson?
Colonel Alvarado?
Yes.
Colonel Suri?
Yeah.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
No.
Mrs. Matheson?
No.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We are on to our next policy. Two thirty-six point one, School Board Committees to Advise Administration and the School Board, first reading. There will be two readings for this. Goals and objectives ensure students, staff, families, and the community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. Proposed revisions to Policy two thirty-six point one addressing School Board Committees are before the board for consideration. The board has received input on the possible restructuring of the board and administrative committees from the Association of Alaska School Boards, A A S B, the School Board's Ad Hoc Committee, the administration, and the public. The proposed revisions to the policy are now before the board for first reading. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the first reading, public hearing, and advancement to second reading of Policy two thirty-six point one, School Board Committees to Advise Administration and the School Board.
Second. Thank you. Just moving this. We will, we will go straight to public comments. First on the list is Sandy Ryan.
This is the one you moved to.
This is the one I moved you to, correct. If you will state your name, spell your last name, state your area of residence, you will have two minutes to testify.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, again. My name is Sandy Ryan. I'm a 29-year mathematics and computer science teacher here in Fairbanks, and I currently serve as the Fairbanks Education Association President. I reside in Fairbanks, and the spelling of my last name is R Y N. I think it was the last School Board meeting of the year, last May, a discussion was opened about reorganizing current board policies, current, or, excuse me, board committees. It is often a good thing to look at structure, evaluate what works and what does not work, healthy and often productive outcomes. However, the conversation began to question why F E A, ESSA, and F P A should have input in some of the committees, why employee groups should have a seat at the table. This caused me some pause. Really, it caused me to kind of scratch my head. Why would an organization not want to have input from their employees as to what was working, not working, and how to maybe make it better until it boils over? Why would any organization want to systematically cut out an opportunity to get meaningful input from employees willing to give their time after work hours in order to make the organization better? This was especially puzzling for an education organization. It is not the School Board nor administration that delivers instructions. It is the teachers, counselors, librarians, therapists, and psychologists that are in the trenches and understand what is currently working. Excuse me, the cough came late today. What could use some tweaking and frankly what is currently not working and should be thrown away? It is the principals that put out the daily, sometimes hourly fires in buildings to once again allow those educators to do their job. And finally, it is our support staff professionals that hold us together, making sure that the path is clear to get those teaching professions into, into practice. Yes, ladies and gentlemen, you are charged with adopting policy and setting priorities, but attempting to develop those without the input of your professional staff is simply irresponsible. Please let the voices be heard.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I usually wait for the chair to recognize me. Ms. Ryan, did you review the committees?
I did.
The document that's before us? Because I see an F P A representative, an F E A representative, and a employee support staff representative.
For many of the committees, go down to legislative and show me those, please.
I understand that. So the Legislative Committee, may I ask another question?
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Do the unions have their own lobbyists and their own legislative priorities?
I understand where you're going with the question.
Yes or no? Do the unions have their own?
Oh, that's unfair. I can tell you, yes, but however, we are a school district, we, you, me, teachers, support staff, and if we work together to lobby for the same thing, it's stronger, it's more powerful.
I understand, I was just wondering if you had your own lobbyist.
Well, we have a person, and we have the president. It's not like we have a machine.
Thank you.
And, oh, wait, no, wait, but F E A doesn't have a lobbyist, F P A doesn't have a lobbyist, ESSA doesn't have a lobbyist, N A Alaska has the lobbyist. And often, quite frankly, F E A and ESSA, and I'm not sure about F P A, but I can tell you, they will actually lobby for things that the school district wants that hasn't been talked about at the state level because we came together at the table and we decided on those. So, we're here for our kids, right here in town.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you, Ms. Ryan, for your testimony tonight. Just in your experience, and again, clarification for me, on the Legislative Committee for, you can speak for F E A, the other organizations can speak for themselves, but have you found it helpful when you go down to Juno or you're talking to legislators to know what our district priorities and be part of that conference, that understanding? Has that been helpful to you when you are lobbying? And maybe even sometimes not in agreement, but to know what we have in common and what we may, the reasoning why there may be some differences? Is that helpful being at that table?
In the five years that I had the pleasure of serving as the President for Fairbanks Education Association, I found it very helpful for me to be able to talk personally about how those decisions were made on what our priorities are. I bring the booklets that we make that are nicely done and has the data, and I'm able to turn to those pages, and I'm able to bring those to light as I speak with legislators there. Even when I work for the Chamber, because I'm a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I always bring that back too, because I believe it's our community that we're representing. It's not my union that I'm representing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony this evening.
Thank you.
Erin Janoso? If you will come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
My last name is spelled J A N O S O, and I'm from Fairbanks. And I'm a member of the Diversity Committee, but I am here tonight speaking only for myself. Last May, C S A Moline released a memorandum describing the district admin's recommendations for committee reorganization. This is when we learned the admin were recommending the elimination of the Diversity and Parent Engagement Committees in favor of a new Community Engagement Committee. When the agenda for tonight's meeting posted, we learned the word equity had been newly tagged onto the front of this engagement committee's name. So equity and diversity are both very important, but they are not interchangeable words and should not be used that way. And plopping a word at the start of a group's name does not, does nothing to necessarily affect that group's priorities. Indeed, the stated purpose for this new committee does not center equity or diversity. Instead, its purpose is broad and vague and is intended, it says, to consider many different areas of concern the district might encounter. This is in contrast to the language within the Diversity Committee's vision statement that specifically states and intentionally prioritizes finding ways to make sure all students within this district realize their lifelong learning potential. The Association of Alaska School Boards says these concerns are within a school board's purview. Boards can champion increasing the support of children and youth throughout the district, it says. They should also be proactive in identifying and addressing issues that affect the education of students. This afternoon, I received an email from the school district stating that with school board elections happening on October 4th, "Vote everyone, please. All committee meetings have been paused until the new board president has made board member committee assignments for the 2223 school year. I'm asking the board tonight to allow the decision eliminating the Diversity Committee to wait until that point as well." It is good that Ms. Moline says the district intends to encourage conversations around topics related to equity, diversity, and inclusion within its various departments. Allowing the Diversity Committee, a group made up largely of volunteers dedicated to exactly these priorities, can only help facilitate this. Please allow it to remain. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony this evening.
Thank you.
And for all those who are testifying for waiting so late in the evening. Next, we have Julie Smith.
I'm sorry, I really want to say, but I have critical medicine.
Thank you so much for coming this evening. Julie Smith, do you hear us?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. If you'll state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, you will have two minutes.
Hi again, my name is Julie Smith, S M Y T H, and I live in downtown Fairbanks. I am very disappointed because I have already testified on a similar plan before summer break, and it was pointed out that the committee that gave the guidelines to the administration to come up with a new plan had specifically asked for the Diversity Committee to continue to exist because it has an important role in giving the diverse students, staff, and families a place to come and give you advice on different policies that you are creating. And once again, we have a new policy before us that does not do what was requested. I also would like to point out that there was an organized agenda behind creating this because you put together a committee that was organized and had the agenda to put together this new plan. And according to one of you, give me one second, let me pull that up. The agenda cannot be trusted, especially when you're not following the advice of those who came together to give you the guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Putt Clark? Is Putt Clark still online?
I do not.
They were not on earlier either. Savannah Fletcher? Oh, I apologize, sorry.
That's all right.
If you'll state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you will have two minutes to testify.
Certainly. Savannah Fletcher, I live in West Fairbanks, F L E T C H E R. And I am here in my personal capacity, but some of my comments are also just influenced by my experience on the assembly and how we've handled some of our committees, so I just have some ideas spurring from that. First, this kind of overlaps with the two policies being considered tonight, but I'm not totally clear why this new Equity and Community Engagement Committee isn't under this policy. It seems it has a much more similar structure to many of the other committees that are under this twenty-three six, two thirty-six point one versus two thirty-six point two. That's a side note. Also, just in terms of like clean language, two thirty-six point one, I don't think it needs to permanently have in the policy language the words about how you will temporarily transition from like a larger board or a larger committee to a smaller. That seems like something that doesn't need to be immortalized in that language. So trying to find a way to edit that out, but just say, "This is how we will transition," I would recommend. Also, many of these committees, you guys are going to smaller numbers of people. I can understand reasons for that, but I just want to flag meeting quorum with such, with a smaller number when so many of those positions are required to be specific roles. I think those roles and specificity are important, there's a reason for each of them, but at least in our experience at the Borough, we often have seats go unfilled when we have more specific labels and requirements for each seat, and then you don't have quorum and those groups can't meet. So just something to flag, if you wanted to maybe just say, "We encourage at least one from each of these groups, not allowed to exceed one rep from each union," for example, but just having flexibility there so you can continue to meet. Similarly, on that point, I really would discourage having no set minimum frequency for meetings. We've seen our committees just languish when we don't have requirements. I'm on our Road Service Area Committee, we now meet every two months, whereas it used to be as requested, and we never met before, and now we're solving really pressing Road Service Area issues because we're consistently putting together agendas and talking about what is concerning the community. So I would set specific times, at least minimums, that you will have meetings. Additionally, let me make sure I'm going through this. I think, specific to certain committees, Legislative Priorities Committee, I'm on that similar one for the Borough, I would love to have representatives from our unions, from our employees, participate in that for us. I feel like it would help us have far more informed conversations. That firsthand in the trenches experience is extremely valuable, so I would encourage having that representation continue in your Legislative Committee. And I also want to say, in terms of eliminating the Diversity Committee, I think that's a big mistake. There seems to have been no input from that committee that would support this conclusion, and it, as people have said, it seems to kind of fly in the face of the purpose of this type of committee. They give you a recommendation, and instead of taking that into account and trying to find a way to continue to address those diversity concerns, it seems to be ignored. When we have committees that say we still have work to do as a group, we don't eliminate them, we've kept them at the Borough, and I think it's to our strength. That's all.
Thank you for your testimony this evening. We appreciate you sticking it out with us. Next, we have Mary Willey. If you'll come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you'll have two minutes to testify.
Again, I'm Mary Willey, W I L L A Y, I live out the Gilmore, Still Creek area. I represent Fairbanks Native Association. F N A supports this resolution that authorizes our executive director to appoint a representative to each committee, to each committee. F N A has been working with Fairbanks North Shore Borough School District through tribal consultation for a few years. This discussion started over a year ago and is supported by F N A administration, F N A administration, and received prior board support. F N A supports the success of all students and have much to offer to the community assignments. F N A's mission is to improve the quality of life for individuals, families, by promoting justice, healing, and wellness in our community. F N A, at F N A, we embrace the people of our community, and this will be sophisticated on this committee level. We are rooted in our culture and traditional values, and will bring to this, bring this to the district as we've been, okay, well, okay, as we have been. F N A has been partnering, partnering, partnering with the school district to improve attendance, closed achievement gap, increase graduation rate of our students. F N A takes these goals very seriously and acts on them. We seek and apply for grants to address these goals. We employ staff placed in your schools to help address these goals. We understand the challenges of all students and families are facing, facing with housing needs, food insecurity, and poverty. What we have to offer on these What we have to offer on these committees is knowledge, understanding, solutions to help all the students succeed. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony and for sticking it out with us. Next, we have Gretchen Gordon. If you'll state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you'll have two minutes to testify.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Gretchen Gordon, G.O.R.D.O.N. I live in Fairbanks, and I have a student in the district. Good evening. It's come to my attention that this body intends to discontinue the Audit, Parent Engagement, and Diversity Committees, standing committees of the board. It makes sense that the Audit Committee be ad hoc due to its transient nature. The Diversity and Parent Engagement Committees address issues that occur year-round and should remain standing committees and not reduce to combine, to a combined committee that only holds meetings as needed to address a wide range of items established by administration. That whole thing was a quote. Equity and inclusion, assuming diversity, is a goal, a core goal in the 2020-2025 strategic plan, taking a prominent place just after student success, which was approved just two and a half years ago. Your equity and inclusion goal states, "Provide equitable opportunities and an inclusive environment where all students and staff are respected and feel welcome, safe, and supported." This is your strategic plan. You wrote it, you approved it, and you've already dedicated resources for it. The last few years have uncovered a greater need for a robust representative and functioning Diversity Committee. However, now, you decide that a major goal is no longer relevant, one that is so important that it was placed in the top two of district goals, to one that is now so irrelevant that is relegated to be dealt with in overburdened administration as issues arise? This is not strategic. This appears to be another attempt to create a hostile environment to students, teachers, and staff who are deemed different, so that families will decide they can no longer tolerate an intolerant environment, further reducing enrollment and increasing attrition in staff, ultimately fulfilling your influenced agenda, externally influenced agenda, to dismantle public school system. Do not degrade the importance of the Diversity Committee. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Ms. Matheson?
Hey, Ms. Gordon.
Hi.
I was wondering if you've ever sought any help from the Diversity Committee, or the Legislative Committee, or even the Parent Engagement Committee?
Have I received any help personally?
Yeah.
My child probably has because of the, because of the policies or suggestions that come out of the Diversity Committee.
So have you ever spoken to anyone on the committee?
No, I have not personally, no.
Okay. And do you know what they do to help the community?
Do I know what they do to help the community?
Yes.
I don't know what they do to help the community, but I imagine that the Diversity Committee works hard to establish some recommendations to the board so that the schools are creating a more welcome environment for students, educators, students, faculty, and staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony and for sticking it out with us. That concludes the people who have already previously signed up for testimony. Are there any further people within the audience? If you'll come up, state your name, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you'll have two minutes to testify.
Hello. Tamara Cruz Rosellis, K.R.U.S.E.R.O.S.E.L.I.U.S. I reside in Fairbanks, and I'm coming to speak of the importance of keeping the Diversity Committee. I've heard a lot of great testimony here tonight about the mission statement, which the board all knows, and why it's important to keep this. And I just wanted to add a few things I thought while just sitting here. First, I'm embarrassed at having to speak about why we should have a Diversity Committee, just listening to the testimony tonight. This board should not outsource equity and maybe diversity. I don't think diversity is even mentioned in the Equity Committee, and we do know they're different things. Diversity is making sure that everybody is brought to the table. I have spoken to different community members just tonight. I was at, at an event and spoke to people all across the political spectrum, parents of students in the district, and they all shook their heads and said, "Getting rid of the Diversity Committee," I mean, nobody thinks that's a good idea. I have been on the Diversity Committee, and I know that it does do good work. It's, it's very important that we show our students that diversity matters. It's important that we show our community diversity matters. Diversity is very important to our community. And by getting rid of a committee, you're saying that doesn't matter to us. And I really strongly urge this board to not say that because the community listens and the community is watching. And if you think that there's a better way to do this, you know, we've heard other suggestions of different ways of going about that, let's defer, hold off, until we've got a new board seated. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Ms. Matheson?
Mrs. Rosellis, you said that you were on the Diversity Committee?
Not this past round, but I have been.
You have been. And how did you support students in the Diversity Committee?
Oh, my gosh, lots of ways. We are always listening to different viewpoints and coming up with things that we can do in the schools to help with students and outside of the schools, too. And I think the main import of a Diversity Committee is just knowing that there's a place to come, you know, because you've got a good amount of members on that. You've got parents, you've got school, you've got teachers, you've got administration, you've got the board. And it's a place where everybody knows they have a seat at the table. And that's what's as important as anything you do here, is making sure that every student knows that there's a place for them.
Go ahead, Ms. Matheson.
Thank you. And how diverse is the Diversity Committee? Other than the occupations, what other diversity is there amongst the committee?
I think that would be hard for me to say. In what, in what respect?
In sex, in gender, in religion, in all of it. Everything that's protected. Is that something that is considered when you're on the Diversity Committee?
I don't choose the Diversity Committee, so I can't say that for sure, but we, when I was on it, we had quite a wide variety of viewpoints. And, you know, that's how it should be.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
And I believe everyone here has testified, if they wanted to. Any other further testimonies? Public testimony is now closed. And we are going to go to 236.1. So, a year ago, we had, just about a year ago, we started the discussion of committees and some of the internal inaccuracies and difficulties that some of the committees were having. And as a board, we decided to go ahead and do a deep dive and see what does and should not be changed within the committees to ensure that we are focusing on the responsibility of the board and not the responsibility of the operation of the district. And so, we had AASB, who came and spent an entire day, day and a half with us, as we discussed, board committees, policies, the importance of what they felt was top priority, and things that they felt that we needed to change as a board. To ensure that we do have focus on what our responsibilities are as a board. And then, we had an ad hoc committee that met and made recommendations on things that were a priority to the ad hoc committee. And then, we had administration come and give us information that administration would like to see as committee work. And then, we had a lot of public feedback on what they, what public felt was and was not appropriate for the board. And so, we received all of that at the beginning of this past summer. A lot of feedback has been trickling in throughout the summer and through to the end of summer. And we had talked about the ad hoc committee creating the proposed changes within the policy and the administrative regulations. So, that unfortunately did not happen this summer. And so, I ended up taking that with Mrs. Tuttle to create a possibility for the board. This is not a, this is Jennifer Luke's plan. This is a attempt at a culmination of all of the information that was given to the board from four different areas to create a policy and utilize the AR to then create streamlines to ensure that we, as a board, are focusing on what our responsibilities are and not on the operations of the district. And by taking things from the AASB, such as reducing the number of committees, because we are the district that has the most committees in the state, or one of the two districts that has the most committees of the state, reducing the number of people who are within the committees themselves, because they were quite full of, of a lot of amazing people. But they said that it would be better to get between seven and 10 people to be a part of the committee. That way, the work can be streamlined and move forward. And so, those were some of the things that we, I considered, and Ms. Tuttle helped me as we kind of navigated putting this together. So, in 236.1, it states that the board committees are the budget, curriculum, and policy to reflect the school board's roles and responsibilities. And that, and one of the recommendations from the ad hoc committee was to ensure that the Legislative Committee was a committee of the whole, so that we can get the entire board into the discussion on the legislative priorities. And that the Audit Committee would be an ad hoc committee whose responsibility would be the treasurer. And as you go through, we took language from the committees' pages themselves for the purpose of those committees, through to the policy. And legislative committees. And then, when we go into the structure of the school committees, or the, excuse me, the board committees, you have the Board Committee Chair, the Board Committee Administrator, FPA, FEA, ESSA, Regional Student Council, and then we added to include the Tribal Consultation Representative, which would be assigned annually by the Executive Director of the Fairbanks Native Association. And then, we would have the three at-large members, chosen by a first-come, first-chosen process, for a two-year term, as is currently our practice. And then, with the... The administrative committees. That's 236.2, I apologize. I know that there are a lot of questions, and we can definitely talk about some of the wording and what the board is considering and where the board thinks of going. I know this is my very first time ever working on policy and administrative regulations. I know it's not perfect, it's not perfected, and that's why we have first readings. So if there are changes that need to be made, now is the time to make it. So that we can continue on with this discussion and ensure that it is representative of the board that we currently have. This is something that we've been working on for a year now. There has never been any nefarious reasoning or backhanded or backdoor negotiations or reasoning behind anything. This is an attempt at taking all four of those stakeholder comments, proposals, information, and creating one first draft of policies and administrative regulations. And now is the time, as a board, to come together and be able to make the changes and make recommendations and make, have a discussion on where we, as a board, stand. And so, I'd like to open it up to discussion at this time. Ms. Anderson?
So, after this work was done, I think what we need, we probably need is a work session to go over this. And then, we could have cleaned it up or looked at it, or input or whatever, and then bought this back. So I would be in favor of us having a work session to do that.
Ms. Smith? Oh, I apologize. I had Ms. Marotti, then Mr. Dorn, then Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I agree with Ms. Anderson on the need for a work session to go over all of the changes. I'm also curious. I really appreciate, actually, Ms. Moline's explanation on how parent engagement will live on within the district through the SPED and the Student Services Department. But if the board were to vote to remove the Diversity Committee tonight, we don't really know what the negative impacts will be on the community. So, to, to agree with Ms. Anderson and to allow administration and the board to do more research on this potential change, I do think that we need to postpone this motion, have a work session, and then come back as a board, a fully knowledgeable board. So with that being said, I move to postpone this motion until we can have a work session and more time to research.
Second?
I need a second.
Well, what date are you attaching to the work session?
The work session, the next work session is September 19th. And that's our next work session. And we do have work for the superintendent search, but that could also be, we can put that in with this, if that's the will of the board.
Yep. According to our newest calendar, it appears that October 17th, there's no work session already scheduled. So I move to postpone this motion until we can have a work session on October 17th. So there'd be the regular board meeting after that, sorry. I move to postpone this motion until October 18th, when, so that we can have a work session on October 17th.
So my question is, can we do it any sooner than now?
There's a work session on the 19th of September. That work session does have information on the superintendent search. And update on negotiations. On the 19th. And then, October 3rd is information on our magnet schools and information on the proposal of North Star College, Barnett, and Hutcheson High School. And if it goes to October 17th, that means that it will not be brought up until November, after the new board gets voted in, and then postpones the start of the committees. So the vote will be done after the work has been done with this board. So what is your motion that's on the floor? Can you please read it one more time?
Yeah. So, I move to postpone this motion until...until October...or we... So, what would be the date, then? You just said in November.
If you have the...if you have the work session on the 17th?
I don't have a date. Oh, right there.
October 17th. If you have a work, if we have a work session that night, we could not put it on the October 18th meeting.
So, November 1st.
So, it would have to be on the very first meeting of the new board in November.
So, I move to postpone this motion until November 1st in order to give the board time for a work session on all of this and the board time to research this decision.
Is there a second? There is no second. So, motion fails due to lack of second? I have, I have Mr. Doran and then Mrs. Smith.
I'm very much of a mind that has been mentioned about having a work session on this and a postponement. I don't think this is ready. And my general comments on this topic, I was holding on suggesting a postponement, because this is the first time we've talked about this as a board, really. We have something here. And I want to say, I really like a lot of the ideas in here, and it does address some real issues. I love the piece about saying the audit should come out, and that's treasurer's, it's out of there, because that's not a board committee, actually. That's a partnership meeting with the borough and the district, and we're part of a bigger piece, but we have someone at the table. So, I think that's great. I love the fact that it's stating, although I might word it differently, stating that the ARs have to come back to the board. Because when I became Board President, I found out that it had been changed by a previous president, never knew that. It had been changed by the Superintendent, never knew that. And so, that had never come to the board and information. So, there are pieces that I really, really like. I do think it's...there's lots of redundancy and extraneous language. And on the policy part should be really tightened up, and the AR can address some of those things. So, with that in mind, I mean, and I'm not putting out a date right yet, because I'd like to hear more from the board. But I would look at saying, it is something to do sooner rather than later, because we want these committees, and we have notified people, standby, who have committed to be on committees. The October 3rd, I absolutely support. We have to talk about alternative programs. That doesn't, that can be put later. This can be put earlier, and which gives us time if we have a... You said, "This is a first draft." And that says a lot to me, because I see that and I hear that. You want to make sure we talk about it and we address the issue. So, I really like that. So, I would favor doing the 3rd. We can act on it in October. Actually, it would be exactly five years after the board that did change the committees significantly. And this is much of that took action. So, that being said, I would like to see us go on, but I would like to hear some things and maybe do an earlier.
Can I ask something for clarification? So, you're saying bring it to the board on October 3rd?
The work session. I think, I think we need a work session. And I would really like to hear a report from the Ad Hoc Committee as part of that, because they asked, the Ad Hoc Committee specifically asked the administration for their recommendations, but we have not had it. And I understand some are getting together. It's hard for all of us. But, you know, what they've taken from those recommendations, what they would bring back as an Ad Hoc Committee.
So, the first committee meeting, then, would be, or the first reading would be October 18th?
Okay. Let's do the work session first. If we have it ready for that, yes. I do know the timeline's tight, but I think we need to be ready, and this is not ready yet. And my last comment, I would say, is we're talking about committees. We're talking about policy. I know this is...this section of policy, the 200s, are the board, how we operate. But I also then look at, we want advice and input from our stakeholders, but it's not going to Policy Committee. So, I do have, I mean, there are various things. My bottom line is, it's too early to be done. We need more work on this. Rather than wordsmithing it tonight, there are too many bits and pieces, I think, that... So, that's my concern.
Ms. Smith, then Ms. Anderson?
Thank you. Where to begin? Okay. There's just a couple of points I want to make. First of all, I'm not sure that this entire conversation is in proper order. Second of all, the Ad Hoc Committees, it was mentioned, I served on the Ad Hoc Committee. It was mentioned in testimony and by other members that the administration did not do what the Ad Hoc Committee wanted done. But Ad Hoc Committees was formed to advise, not to dictate. So, I appreciated that the Ad Hoc Committee already gave their report, told the public their findings, and were taken into consideration, but not dictated to the administration. The administration then provided us their recommendations based off of the information given by the Ad Hoc Committee. And the board members have had this document for five days. So, I just want to air my frustration with the fact that no one... There's no preparation from all the people who are saying that the language is not buttoned up, not appropriate, with their changes for first reading. That's what we do at first reading, is my understanding, is that we put forward our recommendations for changes. And I'm generally okay with the language, so I don't have any recommendations for changes. I mean, sure, it could be buttoned up here and there. But I don't have sweeping changes that we need to spend an entire day of this board and the public's time to hash out over exactly which word we put somewhere. I don't know. I'm not feeling it for the work session. I just wish that if there were, was a lot of wordsmithing, a lot of changes, a lot of important things to people, that they took the last five days that we have had this document to bring those things prepared to this meeting, instead of wasting another day.
Ms. Anderson?
Well, I just would like to meet sooner. And with all the language, sometimes it's overwhelming to see it written like this. And I just, I don't want to take it down into the months and months. I want us to work on this document sooner, in the form that it already is. I mean, I think the President would appreciate any comments and us working together as a unit to say, okay, this stays, we like that part. I mean, I think that's what a work session would provide us.
Mr. Doran?
Thank you. I wanted to say, and I thought very strongly beforehand relative to Ms. Smith's comments, we did see it last Thursday. That was the first time this was out. And I, when I have gone through it, I have red marks, green marks, yellow marks. I had started making a list of amendments. And then I thought, wait a minute, that's not productive for a business meeting at this point. There would be some, you know, and that was just me. So, I assumed there would be other amendments from other members, and we would spend a lot of time on it. So, I decided not to take that approach. And I can. I don't think it's productive for our time. And however, I think we can really talk through some of these much more productively within a work session. If it comes up earlier, that's fine. I don't...but I think we need to hammer out some of those, and then we can bring back the substance for the public and for ourselves to decide upon. So...
If the request is earlier, the next work session is the 19th?
It's when we schedule it. It's whatever date we schedule it on.
Right. But I'm just going back to Ms. Anderson, where she mentioned she likes the idea of doing it earlier rather than later and utilizing that time effectively by sending ideas or changes to Mrs. Richardson, so she can compile that and have it ready for us for the meeting, so we can utilize that time wisely. If that is the will of the board. I can't make, I cannot make...
The point of order. Can you tell me the motion on the floor? Is there a motion on the floor?
There is no...the only motion on the floor was the original for the reading of the policy.
First reading of the policy.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I had Ms. Matheson and then Ms. Marotti.
A Google Doc of this that we can all...that's what I wanted to know, if it was in open meetings. Okay.
Ms. Marotti?
That'd be nice, that we get a lot more done. I appreciate a sooner-than-later perspective. However, I think, I think President Luke said earlier that the number-one priority of ours is the Superintendent Search. So, that being said, I think if we're looking at priorities, the Superintendent Search needs to get started. And I appreciate President Luke stating that she wants to get that buttoned up before, so that the new board can take it and run. And then, this committee decision can come next, which would be October 3rd. And then, that can push then the Alternative Education Options Work Session to October 17th. I think if we're looking at priorities in the boards, the stated board's priorities, then that makes the most logical sense to me. October. Yeah.
Mr. Doran?
I think that timeline, the 3rd, then we could do a first reading and then a second reading, 1st of May, 1st of November, which is still timely, especially if it's the second reading, because it's at that time with the board reorganization that people indicate maybe interest in the committees they'd like to serve on. And the President can start those committees, so they wouldn't be meeting, you know... And if committee needed to meet earlier than that, if there's some things on their agendas, certainly, we have those committees. They exist, and they could meet prior to that in their present capacity. I would ask that we can get this in a in a Word document, because I had thought of offering a substitute tonight, because once you start crossing out things a bit, you know, that would be clearer. When you try and download it from the board docs, it came out to 44 pages for one of these, and lots of blank spaces and formatting, it just... So, I know Mrs. Richardson is actually working on that. And so, just for the rest of the board, that we can get a Word document. And then if we do have something to offer, we can bring it or send it in time for the work session.
And Mr. Doran, to answer your question, it should be in a Word document, because that's how Mrs. Tuttle and I worked on it.
Right. That's what I'm assuming, it's there. But just in order, when you try to print it from the...
Correct, from board docs, absolutely.
It's not, I'm assuming it is.
So, there is, there is a Word document.
Yeah. And it just was a busy day, and I don't want to, I'm just offering it. I have no question about it coming. I just wanted to offer it as we do that.
Ms. Marotti?
So, it sounds like the October 3rd is sooner rather than later. So, just so that we can move on, I'm hoping that we can...so, I'm going to move to...
Ms. Marotti, I apologize. Before you do that, could we extend time?
Move to extend to 10:30 PM.
Second.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, we are extending until 10:30. Thank you, Ms. Marotti.
No problem. Okay. So, I would like to move to postpone the first reading to the October 18th regular meeting in order for us to have a work session on October 3rd as a board to go over these policies.
Do we have a second? Hearing no second motion is... Dead. Mr. Doran?
I'm sorry, I was that close to seconding it. The reason I did a non-thinking process is we're gonna, I think, if we have, if I'm picking up a sense, we're going to have a different document. If we postpone it to the 18th, it brings it back exactly as worded now, and then we would have to do a substitute. I would suggest that we vote this one, and in the interest of time, the next one down, and then bring what comes out of our work session to the 18th and the 1st.
Can you please clarify? So, are you stating we vote these down for the first reading, and then that way, we are free to have a work session on October 3rd and bring it back in front of the board on October 18th? That is the clarification?
Yes. So, it'd be a cleaner piece?
Procedural.
It's a procedural thing that I think would make it cleaner for everybody.
It's the same dates, it's the same dates by just voting. It's the same dates, just voting it down, so that we have the ability at the work session to work freely on the document, in case it comes out different. So, it might be a different document. That way, procedurally, we're covering the board's actions.
And if, and we've made clear, and we can make clear in our comments, we have a work session on the 3rd, that we'll bring this...
Mr. Doran, so do you have a motion?
No, because the motion is already on the table.
The motion is on the table.
I would suggest we vote it down. In the interest of clarity, do our work session, and then with the intent...
We're going to go ahead and do the vote. Ms. Richardson? Ms. Smith?
Can I get a quick clarification of what we're voting on?
If we vote no, the intent is that a work session happens on October 3rd? If you vote no. If you vote yes, you're passing it as the first reading.
No. Colonel Alvarado?
No.
Colonel Suri?
No.
Mr. Doran?
No.
Mrs. Sanderson?
No.
Ms. Marotti?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mr. Sampson?
No.
Mrs. Matheson?
Nope.
Mrs. Luke?
No.
Motion failed.
Thank you. So, the intent is to do a work session on the 3rd? Nope, we now have to go to the next one and continue with the intent of the board. and continue with the intent of the board. So I will go to number five. Policy 236.2 Administrative Committees to Advise Administration and the Policy Board and the School Board First Reading. Goals and objectives. Ensure student, staff, families, and the community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. Proposed revisions to Policy 236.2. Addressing administrative committees are before the board for consideration. The board has received input on the possible restructuring of the board and administrative committees from the Association of Alaska School Boards, the School Boards Ad Hoc Committee, the administration, and the public. The proposed revisions to the policy are now before the board for first reading. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve first reading, public hearing, and advancement to second reading of Policy 236.2 Administrative Committees to Advise Administration and the School Board.
Second.
We now have a motion on the floor and seconded. We do have some testimony. First, we have Casey Casort via Zoom. Okay. Casey is no longer on Zoom. Sandy Ryan. If you'll state your names, spell your last name, give us your area of residence, and you'll have two minutes to testify.
Thank you, ma'am. Evening again. My name is Sandy Ryan, R-Y-A-N. I'm a resident of Fairbanks, and currently I serve as the Fairbanks Education Association President. I unfortunately rise in opposition of removing the Diversity Standing Board Committee and attempting to replace it as an administrative committee under equity and community engagement. Diversity conversations can be difficult. We saw that this evening a lot. However, they are also very critical if we are to have a great public school for all of our students. We have set this as a mission in our district, have worked towards embracing our diverse student population, encourage staff hiring that more reflective of what our students look like. We have stated that we should be preparing our students for a diverse and changing society. We're not done yet. You're the decision-makers for our district. Do not take the easy way out and bury discussions about diversity and inclusion in a committee that will find it easier to emphasize community engagement and step aside diversity concerns. Let there be discourse. Let us all learn from others, and let us grow together at the table. Now is not the time to attempt to put it on the shelf and rest on our few accomplishments.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Mr. Doran, is it a clarifying question?
It's a clear statement that I'm going to encourage that we vote this down on the same premise that we did the previous one. And again, I just want to say thank you for bringing the topic to the floor, because it, and it does address some of the concerns that we've seen in the last couple of years.
Thank you. We still have some testimony.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. I'm telling you. Julie Smith? If you will state, thank you first off for sticking with us this evening. But if you will state your name, spell your last name, and give us your area of residence, you'll have two minutes to testify.
Hello, my name is Julie Smith, S-M-Y-T-H, and I live in downtown Fairbanks. I would encourage you to, as School Board member Doran said, vote this down and work on this. I was hopeful when I opened the agenda and saw that there were two plans that one of them might have had the Diversity Committee still intact. And I saw that this was not the case. I was also wondering if the people from FNA had any say in this plan and were interested in being the only specifically designated person of color assigned to a board to represent all people of color in this diverse town, because there are people from all over the world living here in our wonderful community. So please, when you go to this work group, make sure there is a diversity committee. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. If there's no further comments, I believe that we would be ready for the vote. If you vote yes, then you're accepting the first reading. If you vote no, it will go to a work session.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Colonel Suri?
I'm going to abstain on this one, so I just don't have the knowledge to vote on it.
Okay. Ms. Smith? Mrs. Sanderson?
No.
Ms. Marotti?
No.
Mrs. Smith?
No.
Mr. Sampson?
No.
Mrs. Matheson?
Nope.
Mr. Doran?
No.
Mrs. Luke?
No.
Motion failed.
Thank you. Next, we have number six. Policy 233 School Board Officers and Their Duties Treasurer First Reading. Goal and objective. Ensure student, staff, families, and the community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. Proposed revisions to Policy 233 moved the assignment of a board member representative on the Audit Committee to the responsibility of a board treasurer. The proposed revisions to the policy are now before the board for the first reading. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve first reading, public hearing, and advancement to second reading of Policy 233 School Board Officers and Their Duties.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. It is now on the floor. We have no one signed for public comment. Do we have anybody within the room that would like to give public testimony? Seeing none, we, public testimony is now concluded. Considering this is the same as the other policies, are you wanting to continue? Mr. Doran?
I like this, and I think it is different. It's just a clarification that it is the treasurer who sits on that. It's really a joint committee, the borough and the district. So I think that's, this is one we can go forward, and it makes a clarification that I would be supportive of it.
Ms. Marotti?
As someone that sat as the treasurer and therefore was assigned this committee every year for three years, I fully support this change. It's not a committee, it's not a board committee per se as the rest of the committees. It's completely different. Like Mr. Doran said, it's a joint session with the Utility Commission, the Borough Assembly, and the district. And we all work together and meet together. We don't even meet at the district. We meet at the borough. So I support this change.
Seeing no other comment from the board. Ms. Richardson?
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Colonel Alvarado?
No.
Colonel Suri?
No.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Mrs. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Marotti?
Yep, yes, sorry.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Sampson?
Yes.
Mrs. Matheson?
Yes.
Mrs. Luke?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. One out of three is not bad. Next, we are going to Information and Reports. Sexual education material screening process report. Goal and objective. Ensure student, staff, families, and the community are informed, connected, and engaged with the district. Chain Beam, Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, will provide an overview of the review process used for screening the sexual education supplemental materials. Mrs. Maline, we'd like to turn the time over to administration.
Move.
We have another report after this.
Move to extend until 11:00.
Second.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we're extended to 11:00.
So, so just before Mr. Beam gets started, I just want to bring back that this particular report was requested by the board last year concerning the process that we, that we've updated and changed from the last time supplemental, sex education supplemental materials came before you. So this is just the process that we use as a district before any materials come to the board. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Beam.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the few minutes of time that I'm going to take here for this. As was just stated, the board asked for a process to go through these supplemental materials, and that's what we have come up with, and that's what I am reporting to you tonight. There'd be two documents that we're looking at very quickly. Both of these documents were approved by the Board Curriculum Committee back on April 7th. They were first viewed by that committee on, in early March, I believe it was March 10th. They gave us some thoughts, some, making some changes. We've made those changes. And then that committee approved these documents as you have them now. We're going to look at both of them very quickly. The first one is this process itself. So what you have here is kind of like a timeline of the way that this would typically work. This would not work this year because things are getting cut short because of the times. But this is what it would look like typically. And we could use a truncated version of this this year to get things moving on at all, so. So if you look at it first, the first Friday of August, will be a deadline to submit a form that I'm going to show you in just a moment. The teachers would fill out this form and submit it to Teacher and Learning. Then during the first two weeks of September, my department would vet those resources. During the September PD time that we have with the teachers, health teachers would evaluate the requested resources using a rubric, of which that rubric will be created this September 30th by the health teachers themselves. So they're going to work on that. So we're going to get some input from teachers that way. Early October, Mr. Minor and I would make a, would make a recommendation to the superintendent if we choose to do so. And then the superintendent would then either approve or deny that recommendation. Then in October, once it's gone through all of those eyes, and please note that the purpose of this process is to get as many eyes on this before it gets to you all. So right now, it's been a rubric set up by the health teachers. It's been my department. It's been Mr. Minor, and it's been the superintendent. Now it moves to the Board Curriculum Committee. Now it's public, because it is a Board Curriculum Committee item. And then they would take a look at it. If they would move it on, then using a rubric that they would look at it and decide amongst themselves if they want to recommend it to the school board as a whole. So there are many steps, as you can see here, before it would ever get to this body here. At the end of November, beginning of December, we would bring it to this board at that point. And the board would approve it, because you all have to approve all of those supplemental items, as we all know. And then the teachers, the teacher who made that something that they wanted to do would then use it during second semester, or then they could use it any years after that, because once it's approved, then it's approved. The form itself is on the screen now. You have seen that also. The teacher would fill this out. And you can see the, there are four questions in the front that the teachers would have to answer. And then there are a few more questions on the back that the teachers would answer. Basically, what we're saying is, on this form is, where does it fit? What are you asking that it do? What would the students learn from this? And what national standards are covered by this request? You can see on the back, there's a few more items. And then at the very bottom, this would get approved. All of this is done way before you all ever see it. This is just done up to the Board Curriculum Committee. Once this form is filled out, and then all eyes are on it, then it would go to the Board Curriculum Committee, and then it would come to this body here. That is the process that we are looking at. That is, actually, that's the process that has been approved. And that's my report.
First off, thank you. We know that when you came on board, you took an already heated topic. So we really appreciate the work that you have done over this last year and coming before the board. We really appreciate that. So thank you. And I had questions from Ms. Marotti, Ms. Smith, and Mr. Doran.
I second that appreciation for putting this together. I just have two quick questions. Did the Board Curriculum Committee have any say in this presentation or process?
Excuse me, for the presentation today? No. But for the process itself, absolutely. That, they looked at it back in March. They made some thoughts to us. And we made, we changed those things, and they voted on it and approved it back in April.
Great. And then, may I ask just one?
Go ahead.
Thank you. What are the changes? Because, sorry, go ahead.
If I remember correctly, one of them was basically that it took longer, so they asked us to shorten that whole process, which we did. I think it was part of, are the principals actually going to approve it and say, yes, I approve it and check off on it? Or are they just saying, yes, I know that this is something? And it was like checkboxes and things like that. The major thing was, basically, it was a year-long process that we reduced it down to one semester.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Before I ask my question, I did serve as the Curriculum Committee Chair during this process. And I thought that the change was not insignificant from the building administrator reviewed. It was building administrator approved. And so in that process, there was one person who could just say no. And we, as a committee, did not think that one building principal should have the kind of power that kept a material. Because if it was just their personal decision, we didn't want it to be their personal decision. We really wanted it to move on and go through the, more of the process. So the committee had a very good discussion, and we decided that we wanted to always allow it out of the building and into the administration, and not allow the principals to be able to just say no categorically. So we just made them say, I understand that a teacher that works for me and intends to use this material in my building is making this request. So it is actually a really significant difference from the sort of first draft. Anyway, on to my own question that I had. Mr. Beam, I, you know that I actually really love this process, and I was just so pleased with how it came out. I feel that I, there will be no further embarrassment to our community or the board, because we have a lot of professionals touching this information before it is public and before it comes to the board. And I just really appreciate it. I appreciate how you condensed it so that it was still usable in the school year and relevant. My question is. My question is, what about materials that are already approved that did not go through this process, that did not show us that they met standards, that they were related to the curriculum? You know, all these questions that are on your document here are really important to me to know about those materials, that they, you know, what will the students learn? What national health standards do they support? And I would really like to see the 17, 17, right, approved materials that we currently have, I don't think it's too many, go through this process, just because it really is a rigorous process, and, you know, just show us what curriculum, what content area they they're related to, because then we have that documentation that if a parent or a community member comes to us and says, why are you letting my student be exposed to this material? We can say, here's the national health standard that it meets, here's the content area that it meets, and we can defend our approval of those materials. You know, I'm not saying that I don't trust previous boards. It's just that the process was very different, and I'd like to have the information on those materials available so that we can communicate really well with our community.
There are, yeah, I would just say that those items have already been approved by the Board. If you're going to go back on what previous boards have have already done, that is your call. That would have nothing to do with me. I was I would worry, though, that that's a slippery slope, because as soon as you do that, then that opens up to, well, now we can go back and question anything that any Board has done before us. That is all y'all's business, but that's but that's my.
Well, I would ask the Chair if I could ask another question, but I think I'm the Chair right now. So I I just want to clarify that I wasn't asking to vote on those materials, only to have the national health standards that are covered by those materials, to have the content area and subtopic, you know, just to have someone, I hate to, you know, ask for work, but someone from teaching and learning or just someone to sort of objectively fill out this form. Not not that we would vote on those materials, but to have the information readily available on those materials. You know, this this form is protecting the Board and the public from, you know, we're we are able clearly to address parents and address that. I'm sorry, Ms. Matheson.
I think what she's asking for is a CYA.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Cover your butt. So you want us just to cover our butts?
Right. Just have the material available. I'm sorry.
So is that a possibility? I I agree. I would like to have that so that any parent that contests or disagrees, we've got a CYA. And there you go.
I would I would I think that the fact that all that those items have already been approved by the Board, they've already been approved by the Board. That's just kind of my thought. Now, if you guys want to go back and redo that, part of the issue here is whatever was approved by the Board X number of, you know, let's say, five years ago, some teacher brought that forward for a reason at that moment, and we don't honestly, I don't know who that teacher would be. I don't know that we have records of that, and maybe we do, and I just have to go ask some 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 folks. I'm not honestly very excited about having my folks go back and do a lot of research on a thing that wasn't their idea in the first place, if that makes a lot of sense, just because we got a lot of other things going on. If I'm directed to, I'm directed to. That's a little concern on my part.
Mr. Dorn?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Beam. A couple of things. I appreciate this this outline. I think it's it's well done, and I just wanted to highlight within that in the October timeframe, general timeframe, that it after it's cleared the superintendent, it goes to the Board Curriculum Committee, they move it. If they decide to move it forward, then it goes to public review. So I think that's important, that the public knows that that step, and then after that, it comes back to the Board Curriculum Committee. So I just wanted to highlight that there's still that public review that's there, and appreciate it. My question was in terms of supplementals and the further conversation, actually, and I believe it's still similar, when a curriculum area, discipline goes through updating, review, revisions, that's basically like a two-year process. And if I'm correct, there's a lot of time that is spent through that process to identify what standards are, both state, national, you know, the appropriate standards that would be there. And so the core materials and supplementals initially at that point, it's gone through quite a an extensive vetting process, and this is more for really addressing supplemental materials that may come to the fore, some new materials between that curricular adoption and material adoption, which we know are two separate things, and when it will be done again, unless, you know, there's something major that needs to be done that moves a cycle up. But we're on about a six-year cycle. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That, yes, that is correct.
Okay. And partially is because state law, in terms of sex ed materials, said that anything new needs to go before the Board so that we have this process for supplementals, whereas I believe in, you can correct me, in other curriculum areas, I'm thinking math, that sometimes we've adopted a math curriculum, we've done it at language arts, and we found, oh, we needed some more computation, and we needed more phonics and phonics, and we bought supplemental materials to because we saw that there was in the materials, not in the curriculum, but in the materials, there were some areas that needed extra support, and we've been able to do that. But this actually has to come to the Board because of state law.
Correct. Yes. It's a state law that all supplemental sex ed materials must be approved by the Board.
Right. And and if you would go through this process and say, well, that's redundant, we already have good material, we don't need it, or whatever, that would be that would be all addressed in the process.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you for putting it together.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sampson?
I was just going to make a correction. It's CYB, cover your butt. But I am in support of this. It looks like a good change. I also wouldn't want to go through the embarrassment that we've suffered in the past relating this material. It's a serious matter. I'm not sure how much. I I heard a number of 17 supplementals that have been approved by this Board. If this is a new way of vetting supplemental material as it relates to sex ed, I don't think it's too much of a request. Maybe it is. I don't think it is. For all of our material to go through that same process, if we determine this is a good process, a healthy process, one that's better than the one that we've had previously, then maybe it begs the question of why don't we do that with all of our current material? But as you said, that would need to be clearly requested by this body, of which has not has not happened. I'm not in disagreement with with such an idea. But as to the update, I appreciate it, and I think the process has been improved, and I like the accountability and the number of faces and names that it has to go through before it ends up getting to our kids' or children's plate. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Seeing no more questions or comments from the Board, thank you so much, Mr. Beam.
Thank you.
Next, on the last on the agenda is the Cognia. Is that is that pronounced correct? Cognia Accreditation School Board Report. Core value: Maintain high expectations and educational opportunities to inspire high achievement. Luke Minor, Assistant Superintendent, will provide a report on the district's work on accreditation. Mrs. Maline?
Thank you, President Luke. This presentation that Assistant Superintendent Minor is going to do is going to be short, but it does not that is not how the process happened. This this work constitutes hours and hours of commitment on parts of the whole system. It is a K-12 accreditation system, which is is another really large thing that that isn't hasn't in the past been a common thing, and we're one of the the few districts in the state that have gone through this extensive of a process. So I don't want the brevity of this presentation to to take away from the enormity of the work that went into it. So with that, I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Minor.
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Maline, and the school board. Very happy to end this meeting on a celebration. I think this is a big celebration for our district in that all Fairbanks schools are and programs are fully accredited by Cognia. As Superintendent Maline mentioned, we're one of the few school districts in Alaska that have achieved the systems accreditation and definitely and and one of the only large school districts to have done so. Cognia is a national accrediting agency recognized by the State of Alaska to provide accreditation, evaluation reviews, and ongoing continuous improvement supports to schools and districts. In the past, only our high schools have gone through the accrediting process, and a few years ago, the decision was made to seek a systems accreditation. This is a national trend for mid-to-large-sized school districts to ensure consistency throughout the system and to ensure that we're meeting rigorous standards as a school district. As Superintendent Maline mentioned, it's a two-year process made up of two major phases. So one phase was the readiness review. Several of you participated in that. All of our schools participated in it, as well as our district. The schools looked at their strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and challenges as staffs and as leadership teams, and and drafted those out as schools. The district looked at all of those strengths, weaknesses, weaknesses, and opportunities and challenges, and compiled all of those for the Cognia review team to show that we were ready for the next step, which is the engagement review. So we passed that step and then went on to the engagement review, which was last spring. Like to talk a little bit about that process. This is the engagement review process is very timely. There's a ton of time put in upfront to showcase evidences at the school that they're meeting the standards that Cognia has set about. There are the there are 31 standards and 155 key components that schools and districts have to link evidences to. So examples of evidences consist of PD agendas, collected data, communications sent to families, leadership meeting notes, and opportunities for shared decision-making. So if you imagine this huge worksheet, that's can be 20 to 30 pages in length with links to evidences that show that the schools and and the district are meeting these standards. The district was also simultaneously working on a performance standard worksheet that shows meeting standards at the district level, and all of the school and district worksheets were submitted to Cognia at least two weeks in advance for the review team coming and doing their virtual review. Prior to COVID, review teams would actually come on site and meet with the district team and visit our schools. Due to COVID and their staffing challenges, the past couple of years, they've been doing virtual reviews. One week prior to the review, Cognia works with the districts and district and lets us know which schools they would like to review. The schools selected this year were West Valley, Hutchison, North Pole Middle, Arctic Lake, Chinook, Sultra, Pearl Creek, and Lad Elementary. And so just a huge shout out to those schools. While everybody did an equal amount of work going into the engagement review, they were really put under that fine microscope when the when the engagement review team was here virtually and doing their interviews. On the first day of the review, it's a four-day review process. On the first day, the district gives an opening presentation showcasing our community and our schools, highlighting areas of strength and explaining areas we're working on improving. The review team then follows up with interviews with departments, the school board, our superintendent, principals, teachers, support staff members, parents, students, and community partners. The review team then cross-references the performance standards worksheets with all of the interviews and uses a robust rubric to rate the school district and and rate where we're at within this performance standards worksheet. The Cognia review team uses a rubric with these standards up above, so the starting place is engagement, and then you're looking to try to get to embeddedness within your district. I think it's important to note how difficult achieving embeddedness is in today's climate to reach embeddedness. These are desired practices, processes, or programs that are deeply ingrained in the culture and operation of an institution, and this has happened over time, which if you look at sustainability, which is right before embeddedness, takes over three years to achieve. So with all the instability that's going on in the world, it is definitely tricky to get to that embeddedness level. You'll see up above, there's three elements: Initiate, Improve, and Impact, and I'll talk about those in a little bit more detail on the next slide. So I've synthesized down, each of you have the report to go along with the slide deck. I've synthesized down the results for each of the three domains, the leadership capacity domain, learning capacity domain, and the resource capacity domain. If you look up top on the blue, that blue stands for impacting. That demonstrates noteworthy practices producing clear results that positively impact the institution, and you can see that we have two standards that met the impacting level, and those were found within the learning capacity domain. Going across to the improving section, improving pinpoints quality practices that are improving and meeting standards, that's where most of our standards fell within this engagement review, which is very successful. 27 of the 31 standards fell within that improving section. Yellow is the initiating stage. It represents areas to enhance and extend current improvement efforts. So those were some suggestions that the engagement team gave us, areas for improvement. Important to note that this is a continuous improvement process, and so we'll be taking those and working through those in the next five-year cycle. I'm very happy to report that no insufficient standards at this time for our district. I think that's a huge achievement, especially given this is the first time we've sought systems accreditation. So everybody always wants to know what this boils down to and the overall score. So Cognia has an overall score. They call it the Index of Education Quality, or their IEQ. You can see there that Fairbanks' IEQ is 297.42 out of a scale of 400, and it is above the Cognia's five-year IEQ range of 278.34. It's important to note that all of the districts and schools within Cognia's realm, many of them have been doing systems accreditation for several years. There's some that have done that for over 100 years, and so us being a newer district coming on board and doing a systems accreditation, I'm really proud of the IEQ score we accomplished, and that just showcases the high standards and the rigorous standards that we're meeting as a school district. Starting with some strengths, these are some highlights that the review team provided in the report. Fairbanks North Starborough School District has developed practices in all of its school that assure that every learner is connected to a trusted adult to whom they can go with any issue or situation and know it will be treated appropriately and as confidentially as possible. The review team led with this at our closing session with them. Some of you were there, and and hearing this highlight just made me super happy. I mean, ensuring that we have a trusted adult for all students, that's like one of my key educational philosophies, that we need to be meeting the needs for all of our students, and so getting that highlighted was a great accomplishment. And so getting that highlighted was a great accomplishment for the district. All Fairbanks North Starborough School District stakeholders are directly and/or indirectly responsible for the selection of curriculum, and protect and hold each other accountable for its consistent application across classrooms and content areas. They were impressed with our curriculum development cycle and the amount of stakeholders that we have involved in that process. Lastly, Fairbanks North Starborough School District provides students personalized and equitable learning opportunities in addressing its mission of excellence and equity for all through SEL and restorative justice programs. They had a great chat with West Valley and some of the restorative practices work they're doing there. Moving on to some areas that they would like us to focus on in the next five to six years. Fairbanks North Starborough School District leverages some of its stakeholders' input. However, the engagement and the development of the strategic plan has not been optimal. The Fairbanks North Starborough School District has developed and adopted a strategic plan. However, it lacks action steps, timelines, and measures linked to student success and organizational effectiveness. So they would really like to see us put timelines on the strategic plan and have a lot more detail within it as a school district. And then lastly, Fairbanks North Starborough School District prioritizes collaboration and professional learning. However, collaborative activities are not planned based on data-informed needs assessment, as well as supervision and evaluation processes. So something that we need to continue to align all of our professional learning opportunities based on the assessment data that we've collected. So something Cognia continues to stress over and over again, that is a continuous improvement system and not just a one-day event. And I think that's important for us to realize and carry forward. We now have our baseline data, given we've just completed our initial systems accreditation. And then Cognia is shifting to a six-year engagement review with progress checks every two years. We've had a successful work, successful review, and now the work continues to improve on the services and the educational opportunities we provide our students. I didn't want to leave without a huge acknowledgement for the work that the district undertook to make this happen. The district team was comprised of Chain Beam, Rachel Radley, Kate LaPlante, Carla Marquand, and Lindsey Weaver. So a huge shout out to them for the countless hours they put in to ensure the district was ready for the review. All Fairbanks school personnel, the teachers, support staff, our principals, all put a ton of time into ensuring their readiness reviews were ready, as well as their performance standards worksheets for the engagement review. Shout out to our principal and leadership teams of West Valley, Hutch, North Pole Middle, Ryan Middle School, Arctic Lake, Chinook, Sulcha, Pearl Creek, and Lad for actually being the students that the Engagement Team virtually met with. They put a ton of work into that four-day review and gathered stakeholders to ensure that they were there to be interviewed and meet with the Engagement Review Team. And then lastly, just all the stakeholder groups within the community, Board of Education, superintendent, all of our departments were also interviewed throughout this process: principals, teachers, students, parents, and our community partners. So thanks for giving me the opportunity to report and celebrate with you tonight on this great accomplishment.
First off, thank you so much for the effort and time. I know this was kind of the massive project that you've been carrying for the last two years. So thank you. And we appreciate the work, the hard effort that you and your team have really put into this. Are there any last-minute thoughts or questions, realizing that we have 10 minutes left? Mr. Dorn and Ms. Marotti?
Thank you, Ms. Marotti, for the presentation. And congratulations to the district for undertaking this, carrying it out, and so many people who were in it. And I've taken a couple of schools individually through it, and I've been on the side of going through on validation teams. I think they call them differently now than, I don't know, with a number of districts. So I understand it. I had two questions. One is for people who are familiar with the accreditation, or at least generally familiar with it. Cognia is the new name of the group, but it's really a continuation of this accreditation process that has been going on, and we, our schools have participated individually in, on the secondary level. And I love the fact that we're doing it as, we did it as a system. Do you want to just, for the public's information, knowing that what Cognia is, or kind of its development?
Yeah, so Cognia was formerly Advanced Ed. So if you've seen that, I guess insignia in the past at some of our high schools, that was the accrediting agency. And then most recently, they went under a name change, and they're now Cognia. So those plaques at the high schools and our other schools will have the Cognia name. That is the accrediting agency that's recognized by, and the only accrediting agency that's recognized by the State of Alaska. So as you're looking at schools and ASA participation, schools have to be accredited through Cognia that participate in many things.
And there were other accrediting associations before Advanced Ed, so.
Yeah, I'm sure there were.
And I think it's important for the public to know that this is a process across the nation and actually internationally. And I've been, some international situations they've been doing. My question is in terms of when you talk about the Index of Education Quality, Cognia's five-year IEQ range is 278. Is that the average?
The average.
Okay, so they're using range in a, okay, great. And we're above?
We're a little above the average. Yep.
Great. Thank you.
Ms. Marotti?
Thank you for all your work, everyone's work. We've been talking about it, but until you presented just now, it really blows my mind how much work was involved. I have two questions. The first one is about the strategic plan. So prior to COVID, we had a pretty robust strategic plan with hundreds of objectives attached to it, all with like the status of each objective and the timeline for each one. And we haven't seen it since COVID because COVID took over our district. So I'm wondering, was that involved? And is it coming back?
I think that would probably be a question for Superintendent Maline. So something I could answer.
So, yes, as a part of our continuous improvement cycle, we're beginning, and I spoke a little bit about that during our report, each department will again be setting goals for themselves that are most significant for their, there'd be timelines, they'll be tracking their progress. So the short answer is yes.
Great to hear. And I hope that the board gets the report to the board like we used to regularly. It really gave us an idea of where we were at on the strategic plan. And then I noticed that they scored us on, I think if I'm reading this correctly, not insufficient, but not improving or impacting, on areas that resulted in initiating, your educators implement a curriculum that is based on high expectations and prepares learners for the next level, and then the system plans and delivers professional learning to improve the learning environment, learning achievement, and the system's effectiveness. So my question is, knowing those two areas of growth that we can make, how can the board support a progressive movement in those areas?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. The one on curriculum, there was a lot of conversation around the inconsistency with, in our interviews, saying that, the adopted curriculum by the school board is being used with fidelity across the system. And so I think, you know, your role in that is making sure that the curriculum goes through that rigorous process. And when you adopt the curriculum and purchase materials, that, you know, you encourage the school district and the teachers and schools to use that curriculum. That's what they want to see improved there, is that we're really using the adopted curriculum in all of our schools and classrooms around the system. The part on professional learning, I do think there might be a budgetary dollar item associated with that potentially. You know, that's one of the areas that oftentimes gets cut in budget cycles, is the professional learning budgets. And so continuing to ensure that teachers, principals, and the school board have training budgets available to them so they can learn, you know, the appropriate things for their jobs, and can continue to develop their skills. I think that's something that the board could be aware of and help us out with on that.
Thank you.
I have just a really quick follow-up question. That'll take like two seconds. The, so the statement is having the schools around the district actually utilize the curriculum that was vetted, paid for, and expected to be utilized is not currently happening in district-wide en masse. So are they, they're stating that we need to really ask our educators to utilize the curriculum that was adopted and passed, or put in a policy that the curriculum needs to be utilized?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that they're asking for a policy to be put in place. I think it's more of an awareness for our system in general. So that's definitely something that our principals and our teaching and learning department can help with to ensure that everybody understands what the curricular materials are, how to access them, and how to implement them in the classroom. I do think it's important to note that in the past couple years with the instability of COVID and the turnover in staff, and this was actually noted in the readiness review as well, is that the district is rich in resources, but not everybody always knows how to access those resources. So we need to do a better job ensuring that all of our educators understand what we have available to them, and help support them in the use of those materials and resources.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your, your efforts, your work. We really appreciate that. If there are any further questions from the board, I would ask that you email them in light of time. It's 11, just about. But thank you. We really appreciate the administrative team, the educators, and everyone who worked on this for two years on top of COVID, and all of those other items that they've been working on. So thank you. That leaves, our last thing is, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Any objection? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.